Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This is May 2, 2017, 6:00 PM. We have a full quorum with all seven planning commissioners in attendance, and we welcome all the public that has come out, and we hope that you feel comfortable and welcome. Thank you for participating in the public process. We have quite a lengthy agenda this evening, so we encourage everyone, ourselves included, to stay on topic. We promise not to talk unless we need to talk. And please, if you are participating in the public comment, you'll have three minutes during which you can express any feelings that you have regarding the matter. Applicants have up to 10 minutes. And if someone prior to you is saying something that you agree with, there's no need for a duplicate testimony. We promise that anything and everything that is mentioned will be addressed. We don't want to stymie your ability to speak if you'd like to, but please note that everything that is mentioned will certainly be addressed by us this evening. We have one item on our consent calendar, approval of minutes from April 4, 2017. Commissioner Green.
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Green and a second from Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Which brings us to our first public hearing, Redwood Road Street Enhancement Study, Consideration of Adoption of the Redwood Road Streetscape Study. City of West Jordan is the applicant, and Ray McCallas will be presenting on behalf of the city, correct?
I'll start it off.
Thank you.
Members of the Planning Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Redwood Road, as you know, is a regional transportation corridor. It extends all the way from Highway 89 up and down to Elverda. I think it's about 70 miles in length. But through the city of West Jordan, I think it's about three, three and a half miles. Back in 2012, when we started the general plan, the general plan committee recognized that it was a regional transit corridor, but they also felt that it was very important to try to dress it up a little bit. And so, I think Commissioner Hageron was part of that general plan committee when we were looking at the Redwood Road. But as part of that, they developed several goals and policies, and this is kind of the first step towards implementing those goals and policies of the general plan. The city hired a consulting group, MGBNA, Fair and Peers, to do a study to see what could be done along the corridor. This has taken some time. As you know, the UDOT is actually owns the right-of-way, and so anything the city does within that corridor has to be approved by them. And so, the consultants have discussed this, have taken this plan to them, and they've looked it over and conceptually agreed with what's being proposed. With that, I think we've just got a short PowerPoint presentation by the consultants, and I'd just like to turn the time to them, just going to walk you through the plan.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name's Dan Sontag. I work for MGBNA. We are the lead consultant on this team. We worked with Fair and Peers, who's a traffic engineer, to help us in this process as well. And I'll give you a synopsis of the report. The report is a lengthy document that I invite you all guys, you all, to review at your leisure later, but this will be a short summary. So, as Ray mentioned, our goals and objectives of the project was to provide a long-range vision for the corridor, how it can be approved, or improved, to set the city of West Jordan apart from other cities along the corridor. We wanted to identify strategies to improve the safety and functionality of the roadway, improve the pedestrian environment, and the aesthetics along the corridor, and also take a look at the economic situation and identify some opportunities to improve that, those conditions as well. So, first off, we needed to look at the roadway, see what the basic conditions were that we'd have to work with, and go from there. So, just the existing conditions are that there are 217 driveway access points along this roadway, which is a lot. There's, it has a lot of trips per day, it's a wide road, it's regionally significant. There's both, there's a lot of east-west arterial corridors, there's a protected, or a gate-protected tracks line, there's a two-way turn lane. It's, basically means you can turn left whenever you want. There's no shoulder, no on-street parking, no bicycle environments. There's a narrow park strip, sorry, pushed the wrong button, narrow park strip and a narrow sidewalk in, basically the whole way. The collision rate is high on this road, higher than average for a road of this size, and we think it's because of a lot of these conditions. It's very fast, it doesn't have a lot of impediment to that speed, and there's a lot of driveway access points, as we mentioned. UDOT recommends one driveway access every 350 feet, and this roadway has one every 57 feet on average. And then that unrestricted two-way center turn lane, a lot of people being able to turn left whenever they want and coming out of those driveways is causing accidents, is our belief. So, we met with UDOT, UTA, West Jordan Planning Department, and engineers to work out some scenarios. We looked at some creative ideas that were ultimately not pursued because of UDOT's requirement to keep this roadway wide and have those lanes. It would be nice to take a lane to, you know, make the roadway nicer and slower, but that doesn't jive with their goals to move traffic. So, it was decided to keep the roadway as wide as it is, three lanes in both directions, but we wanted to convert that two-way left turn lane into a planted median or dedicated turn lane to restrict turning, restrict those left turns coming out of the driveways as well. There will be intersection enhancements for pedestrian safety, slow traffic. And the study looks at the idea of including mid-block crosswalks. These blocks between intersections are very long. Those, that would require additional traffic study to pinpoint where those would go, but that's a strategy to enhance it. And then economize a lot of those driveway entrances, close them down where there's, there's seems to be a lot of redundancy, especially in the commercial areas. Those could be shut down and economized, make the roadway a little cleaner and safer. And so, with the roadway framework kind of identified, then we can do the fun stuff, and how can we use this, what we have to work with to enhance the pedestrian environment, enhance the aesthetics? Because we think if you, if you can't, if a place can't be experienced comfortably, why would anyone go there? And then it doesn't make it memorable or significant to anybody. So, we think there's a bunch, some simple strategies you can employ to improve, improve the look, improve the feel, improve how pedestrians use and access the space, and how, and how it works, all in concert to make a, make a better spot. So, in essence, you can use site furnishings, streetlights, benches and things to create outdoor rooms and places for people to be. There's this idea of the vertical element, which would be a gateway feature to create a sense of arrival. These features can function as lighting, they can hold banners, or just be art pieces in themselves. And then, there's a myriad of paving ideas that can be employed to organize the space for pedestrians and to create interest and variety. The situation out there on Redwood Road is a little bit stark and does not have any of these urban features that create a place. There's, it's the narrow sidewalk next to a very busy road, and it's rather uncomfortable. I don't, haven't observed a lot of people walking. This is about as best scenario as there is out there. So, we say, let's take this median and plant it, and also, the big idea is to increase the right-of-way width where possible. The long-range vision would be to do it throughout the whole corridor, but at least for beginning phases, to do it where possible, create a 10-foot park strip and a 10-foot sidewalk, which would behave as a multi-use pathway, because there's no, we determined that bicycle use isn't going to be feasible in this roadway, the way it's organized and the width that's available, but there could be a multi-use pathway for not through traffic, but local bicycle traffic combined with pedestrian traffic. And we employ those principles of simple urban improvement to make the space interesting. There's an idea of a paving, colors and patterns that would create a repeating idea to create rhythm. It would go down the corridor, it makes, that repeating rhythm makes a space for furnishings to be located and little outdoor rooms. And then this idea of the vertical element is employed here, which creates the gateway and the entrance effect. So, here's this idea applied over a long, a long range. This is right outside, here's a, this is the city hall building, and you can see how the pattern creates this rhythm, creates lots of space for trees, and how these central medians would organize traffic and help people in their turning movements. This is how an intersection would be treated, lots of, lots of color and paving to help cars realize there's, this is, you're going to stop, and help pedestrians feel more comfortable moving back and forth, as well as those vertical elements on the corners. It all kind of works together in concert to create a really neat space and comfortable pedestrian environment. So, where would this be located? At least in initial phases, we propose that there's these ideas, these areas identified as RDA or redevelopment areas for commercial improvement, especially this one across the street from the city hall. And as those areas get, developers get incentivized to redevelop, this plan will be in place so that what happens at the street front will be, will be determined, and they'll be able to, you know, make those right-of-way improvements and allow that extra space to be used for the pedestrian and street front environment. In the plan, this goes through the whole, the whole corridor from border to border, but this shows where the recommended improvements should be applied, including the roadway improvements, which is this dark blue color, where it can be employed right now, which is in this RDA area, which is the pink. And then in future conditions where there, you know, there would have to be property acquisition, so that would be a long-range view, but ultimately, it would be nice to have that with, that wide sidewalk employed, applied across the whole corridor. This is intersection enhancement, and then the planting medians generally where they're And that's the, that's the plan in a nutshell. Again, there's a larger document that has everything we studied included in it, including some of the alternative scenarios we looked at. Do you have any questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you. I was just wondering on that last image, it doesn't show the sidewalk extending down across the UTA tracks. Is that something that we would have to work through with UTA to get them, in order to get that sidewalk band, the wide sidewalk band, to go all the way through at that top-right portion there?
I'm sure UTA would have to be involved in that. I don't think they would have an issue, it would just be an infrastructure.
All right. I just wondered why that was omitted from the drawing there.
This, this gets into the residential, maybe this is private residence, and then there's more private residences down there, this is just in between. So, in economy, it doesn't make sense to just blow up this.
Yeah.
But it, you know, if UDOT, or UTA was interested, this segment could be done.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you. One question on the traffic study. When these enhancements are in place, how is it expected to impact traffic flow?
This would, I'm sure it would significantly impact traffic flow.
For the better or the worse?
For the worse, initially, but.
Ultimately?
Ultimately, it would be an improvement, especially in safety. The corridor moves people north-south, and it's, it's all that, they have all that freedom of choice where, where they can turn left and come in and out of all those driveways. So, consolidate the driveways and control turning movements with the islands would improve it. So, that said, we're not, we don't propose moving the curb and gutter, so curb and gutter and pavement would persist, and it would be, the process would be to, you know, there would be cutting concrete and building these medians.
Okay.
So, they've done this, I witnessed it happen on Beck Street in Salt Lake, and there's closures, but it was relatively quickly applied.
The traffic area on this shows that it rates during rush hour D or an E during the I-215 and 70th South and 78th South. And I drive Redwood Road as infrequently as possible. Today, getting here, I was 15 minutes just to get from 70th, from I-215 to 70th South.
Uh huh.
And I can't imagine that getting worse. And I realize that's not West Jordan, it would happen farther down, but that's my concern, is that it makes it worse.
During construction.
During construction.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Luthy.
So, just to clarify, when you say it makes it worse, you're just talking during construction.
Yeah.
Once construction has ended, that's when you're talking about things getting better.
Yeah, we're not taking lanes, yeah.
Clarification, because that, that's not the.
No lanes will be removed, and the, and the volume will stay the same. The goal wasn't to, the goal was to improve safety, not, and not diminish capacity. It wasn't about increasing capacity.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I think by streamlining it as far as not allowing everybody to turn wherever they want, it makes it, the road faster, because then you don't have all of those little frequent, you know, brake taps. If you can make it so that it's more uniform and make it so that they have to turn in specific places, it's, you can accommodate those areas better, and that'll overall improve the flow of the road.
Yeah, and an accident isn't good for anybody.
Right, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. Maybe this question isn't best for you, but for the staff, but when are we talking about some of this being, I know we're talking some fairly quickly based on what the mayor wants, but for, for the overall project, when are we talking about time phase, time frames for implementing this? Do we have any idea?
I don't. I don't have an, it would depend on city fiscal calendars, as well as the agreement with whatever future development goes into these areas.
Thank you. Mr. McCallas.
Yes, that's correct. We plan on doing this just segment by segment, but we have no completion time for the entire project. It's just going to be as funding becomes available and as design can get done, so.
Mr. Langford.
I think I could also add, there's another Redwood Road study currently going on right now. It's the, it's kind of a collaborative regional transportation plan with UDOT and a little bit of UTA for some of the transportation issues. I spoke with Bryan Adams, the Region Two Director, two weeks ago. They're very aware of this plan, they've reviewed this plan, they support it. They have an access management plan in conjunction with this multimodal regional plan that they're working on. And they, they're hoping at least their own multimodal study will wrap up sometime around the end of this year, and that'll kind of dictate whether we can use some of UDOT's funding for some of these improvements. These medians obviously go above and beyond any standard UDOT median, and so they would be considered an abetment, but that has the potential though, if we can work with UDOT to reduce some of the costs as presented in your packets. So, it's a moving target at this point, it's hard to nail down a specific date, but as I stated in the, in the pre-meeting, after reviewing this plan, the mayor has asked to do this piece by piece and hopefully be able to move on this, hopefully in the next few years, to be honest. So, I don't know if that helps, but there's a lot of moving pieces to this, and it's good to see that we're moving forward with our own vision, but we also need to be respectful that this is a regional road.
Great, thank you. Well, let's open up the public comment section of the meeting. If there is anyone who would like to speak on this item, please come forward to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commissioners for conversation. Commissioner Green.
There's, there's a couple of things here that I think we need to just keep in mind. One, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take slight issue with the study itself, so hopefully don't take any offense, but the RDA area, number one, the corner of 70th South and Redwood Road, I disagree with the fact that it's got to do, there are some changing retail there, but that 70th South, when you look at 70th South, the main vacant place in that is the northwest, the northwest corner. And that's not because people don't want to be there, it's because of an uncooperative landlord. As, as a business owner that used to be in that complex, that we bailed on that complex because the landlord and the property manager were, in my opinion, that way I can't get sued for libel, in my opinion, it was, it's difficult for them to work with. So, that's where I take a little bit of exception with the report, is that yes, there are some changing retail environment, but at the end of the day, some of that's got to do with the landlord on the corner, because you look at the other couple of corners and they're all full with businesses. The other thing that I have a concern with is, it's going to be great if we do Redwood Road, I think we need to do it, don't get me wrong, but, and that's, but that's only one entrance to the city, and it's only one, one road that people come to the city, and we, I don't know how we address this, but we have hundred, you know, we have thousands of trips going up 90th, 70th, 78th, and we need the same consistent, if lack for a better term, we need the same consistent theme going east and west when people come into the city, because, you know, right now, that'd be great if you're going north or south on Redwood Road, but when you come in, you come in, and unfortunately, I live near 7800 South and part of 7800 South between 13th and Redwood, it's just not a very appealing street. And the same with, you know, parts of 90th now, and so I think we need to take a comprehensive look at that, but anyway, those are my comments, is that we need to make that, we need to include that somehow eventually.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Mr. Langford.
Just to clarify, so yes, I would agree that we need to have a consistent theme to address all of the gateways that come into the city. Coincidentally, when this plan was presented to the city council that same evening, we had, I think, Mr. Clegg and his department, Parks Department, present aesthetic improvements, landscape improvements on 70th South and on 90th South. And so, they have kind of an independent plan for that, but to your point, whatever landscape theme, palette, whatever you want to call it, that we use on Redwood Road, we should also replicate that on 70th and 90th, just to tie everything together. So, we are coordinating those efforts, I just wanted to let you know.
And the reason why I ask about the timeframe on this is, as a, as a business owner on the corner of the 70th and Redwood, the last two summers haven't helped anybody on that corner at all. And, you know, if we immediately go into that in the next couple of years, it's going to hurt the business of those same people again, and that's why I ask.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you. Aesthetics aside, I mean, I love what you've done, the design's beautiful, but the flow of, of Redwood Road is in desperate need of something, and, and I love that, that the medians are going to be controlled better. I love the idea of limiting access of driveways onto the road. You know, it's going to be a learning curve for everyone, but I think, you know, I'm glad to see that there's effort being made to streamline this road a little bit, but also to make it more pedestrian-friendly. I mean, a lot of the roads that we have in West Jordan are not pedestrian-friendly at all. The images that were showed before with the sidewalk completely adjacent to the road, you know, nobody feels safe on that. I love the idea of having the trees and the, and the wide drive strip there that's a barrier between, I think that would encourage a lot more people to use the road in a, in a pedestrian or bicycle fashion, regardless of, of the type of vegetation or whatever ends up going in there as the decorative element. Functionality, I think is foremost for me on this one, and that, that's why I, I personally am in favor of this plan.
Well, and I echo Commissioner Sikoski's thoughts. It's interesting when you get into something, how you see it more. I remember when I got braces on for the first time, I saw everybody with braces, or you get a car and you see everybody driving that same car. As I'm traveling now, I'm looking more at the pedestrian access and the safety, and are there bike lanes, and the medians, and, and how things are kept in terms of landscaping. And I would agree, anything that we can do to help that Redwood Road corridor be a welcome addition for people to know, hey, I'm in West Jordan, this is great. You know, the traffic's flowing better, it's aesthetically pleasing, it's updated, it's a, it's a safe environment. And to speak to the comments that Commissioner Hatch had, I agree that it's a shame that it's taking longer to get places, but I, I would rather sacrifice a bit of convenience in the short run to have a better long-term opportunity. I think that would help the city in the long run, just, just my personal comments. Commissioner Quinney.
Thank you. I just, I just want to say, I think this is great, I think we can't do this soon enough. I just have one question, and this is for staff. In the, in the packet here, they talk about opportunities, we're not here to discuss like the specifics, the retail opportunities, the commercial opportunities that they talk about, and this isn't time and place for this study today, right?
Mr. McCallas.
Yes, yes, that's correct. We'll be, we'll be dealing with that kind of separately, and like I said, just in segments as we go through this.
Thank you. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you. Unless anybody else has further comment, I'd like to make a motion. All right, I move that the planning commission forward positive recommendation to the city council to adopt the Redwood Road Streetscape Study as discussed in this report.
Second. I know, sorry, we'll have to figure that out for motion in a second. So, we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Moving on to item number three on our agenda, O'Reilly Auto Parts, 5562 West Ranches Loop Road, preliminary site plan, PC zone. Road, preliminary site plan, PC zone. O'Reilly Auto Parts, Andrew Shero is the applicant. Is the applicant present? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Nick Heatherly. I'm here representing the architect of record, Mr. Craig Snyder, for this project. I've been asked to make a brief presentation about the project, and then at the end, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. As stated before you, is a preliminary plan, site plan, for a new O'Reilly Auto Parts store to be located at 5562 West Ranches Loop Road. The property being located on a planned, community-developed, development-zoned property. The property is a corner lot at the northeast corner of West Ranches Loop Road and 5600 West Street. The west elevation of the structure will be the front of the building, with access being taken off of both 5600 West Street and West Ranches Loop Road. Access is going to be by way of cross-access easements and shared driveways that are located on both the north and east neighboring properties. The structure is a single-story building with an extended parapets that provides the means to conceal the location of the mechanical equipment on the roof. New sidewalks along both street frontages will be constructed, including new ADA accessible curb ramps at the northeast corner of the major intersection and at the east property line along West Ranches Loop Road. The structure's been situated in the property in such a manner as to not extend itself into any existing easements that lay along the eastern portion of the lot. Landscaping of the site has been designed to meet or exceed local requirements, and the waste container has been located within a fenced enclosure constructed of material that matches the building, which is a split-faced concrete masonry unit. Total of 45 parking spaces are being provided, which exceeds the required 39, with plus two additional handicap spaces that are provided in close proximity to the main entrance. It's our understanding that this preliminary site plan meets and or exceeds the criteria for this community development, and we would ask for your approval of such in accordance with the ordinances of the City of West Jordan and the recommendation of the community development staff. With that, I would first like to recognize that the organization you have here has been very good to work with, and our architectural firm extends our appreciation to them. And O'Reilly Auto Parts is looking forward to adding a new location here in West Jordan. At this time, I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Well, reserve some time for you if there's anything you'd like to address after the public comment section.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. Great, and for our city, we have Mr. McCandless presenting this up, correct?
Correct. Thank you. I have a whole lot to add. Basically, we described where it's located. It's quite some distance, I think it's about 80 feet from Ranches Loop Road, another 80 feet from 5600 West. We did take the... This is a copy of the site plan with the parking around on Ranches Loop Road and the auto parts store is kind of being centered in the middle of the property. We really don't have any issues with how the site's laid out. There's a pedestrian access further from the doors to the sidewalk on the west. It complies with the zoning code. They are here seeking preliminary... This is a copy of the landscaping drawings showing street trees along both frontages and in the park, in the landscape areas that are along both frontages and behind the building as well. We'll have access to the north, access to the east, which will be the shared access which we like. And we really don't have any issues with the site plan or the information that's been provided to us. So our recommendations for approval subject to the... For preliminary site plan approval subject to the conditions of our staff report.
Great, thank you, Mr. McCandless. Any questions for staff?
I just want to make sure I've oriented it right. So this space is 5600 West, and the majority of the landscaping that we see on the right-hand side of this picture, that's towards Ranches Loop Road, correct? Where's the one... Oh, Ranches Loop is on the south. All right, I turned it around. Okay.
Yeah, Ranches... So here's 5600 West and Ranches Loop Road is down here. So that orientation that I showed on the site plan is the same as this. So here's Ranches Loop Road right here and that 5600 West.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Green. Thank you, Mr. McCandless. Commissioner Luthy.
There was mention of an easement. What exactly is the easement for? That's why there was the majority of that landscaping there, was because of easement, correct?
I don't recall off the top of my head. Maybe you can ask the applicant. I think there's an easement here.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing. I just was curious as to what it was for.
I'm getting to that point. I'm not sure it's actually identified on the drawings, but there's a, I believe, a 42-foot-wide easement that runs along and with the eastern boundary of this property, and it extends north even into the property to the north of this one, as well as south across what would be Ranches Loop Road, at least is how it indicates it there. I do not have, in the data that I have, an actual title as to who has that easement or what it's for.
Typically, something like that would have some sort of a utility, is my guess, but is it a utility that's gonna be any kind of impact to the buildings? Where the question was going.
We're not aware of anything that it would impact the structure or the layout of the plan, other than...
It's not like a high-pressure gas line or something along those lines?
Even if it is, we're gonna be out of it, and we would have all rights to have access to the rest of the property.
Okay.
I'll just add something. Thank you. I'm not 100% certain we're talking about the same easement, but there was, at one time, a water line that ran through the site. It was not in the 5600 West driveway, it was inside the property. I don't know how far, 25, 30 feet. And that line has been abandoned, and the easement has been abandoned as well. Again, I don't know if we're talking about the same easement, but there was at one time, and as we've done the development of this property and of the overall subdivision, that has been abandoned.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Well, this time we'll open the public comment section for item number three on the agenda, O'Reilly Auto Parts. If there is anyone who would like to speak on this item, please feel free to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission for further Commissioner Sikowski.
Thank you. I like the O'Reillys looking at the building in West Jordan. I think it's good, in a way, to have ourselves in the back, that we're providing a city where healthy competition is coming in. You know, we've got O'Reilly that's interested in autos on O'Reilly Street. To me, that's an indication that something's going right. But I like the plan. I like that there's a lot of trees along the street. I like that there's shaded parking. I like that there's a nice buffer around the back between the apartments and the building itself, that, you know, that there'll be some landscape in there. And I think the design shows that O'Reilly is not only gonna be a good business here, but they're concerned about keeping the city looking nice, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, the big question is, can you sing the G-oh? Oh, O'Reilly? I mean, that does seem important.
Other parts.
Got the bass counter?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Wow, that was weird. So in full disclosure, so that there's no conflict of interest, I did buy a new car battery yesterday from O'Reilly in West Jordan, so I just want to make sure we declared that.
Thank you for getting that on the public record. I'm sure Julie will like typing that up. Yes, any other discussion leading to a possible motion? We have Mr. McCandless.
Oh, Matthew Scott's magic was really weird. We looked up the plaque, and there is a water line easement. It looks like it's been abandoned, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Quinney.
Just checking to make sure nobody else has anything else they want to say, because I'm just taking a motion.
You just don't want to hear me sing anymore.
Oh, believe me, it's going on replay, it's not bad. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that, honey, commissioner, approve the preliminary site plan for O'Reilly Auto Parts located at 5562 West Ranches Loop Road in the PC zone with the conditions listed in Section 5 of this report.
Commissioner Luthy.
I just have a second.
Thank you. I'll have to work on how to do that a little more efficiently with the system. Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Luthy. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan.
Thank you.
Best wishes to you. Item number four on our agenda this evening is Highland Health Center, 5481 West, Ranches Loop Road, a neighbor to O'Reilly Auto Parts, looks like. Preliminary and final site plan and conditional use permit for medical service in a PC zone. Thrive Development LLC, G. Chase Johnson is the applicant. Is he present this evening?
No, I'm representing him.
Please come forward, sir, and if you could please leave your name and address for the record.
My name is Dan Manno. I'm with Raw Design Studio, 517 South, 200 West in Salt Lake City. I'm the architect for the project.
Great, thank you. Please feel free to present.
So we are just northeast of the project that we just looked at, along 7800 South on... Does this have a... So this is a future access road that will connect to Ranches Loop Road here, which currently exists. So this is going to come in, and that's gonna be our main access to the project, which is here, Lot 7. And the project is a medical office building. There's the site. The plan of the building is a single-level office building, separated, you can see, or separated into six separate suites. Right now, the developer expects that it'll be dental specialties, but it's open to any kind of medical tenants. It does not have a pharmacy drive-up window or anything like that, so it's purely professional practice that is anticipated. From something of itself, this will be our main access into the property. This right here is, actually was required by the fire department, and it's a temporary egress which would connect to this intersection here. Eventually, this road will continue all the way through, and so, and we will have a cross-access agreement to the property to the east, and that will become our second fire exit. And this may become a permanent egress to this new road, or it could be abandoned. We don't have a specific desire one way or the other, but it was required for two fire access points currently. The elevations are a single level with extended parapets, similar to the previous project. They will shield the mechanical units. We have a couple accent materials, tungam roof cedar, which would be stained and add a little bit of warmth to the building, and then a corrugated metal siding that would be a secondary access material. The primary material is three different colors of ephors, light gray, a dark gray, and a medium gray. And if you look at the plan, it's sort of articulated as three separate volumes that are intersecting with each other. And then we have this, one of the requirements in the zoning is to have an eight... It's an eight-inch reveal or pop-out on the building, and so we've done that through this kind of notch here in the center. And we're gonna put some dark metal in that notch to add some accent to that. Here's a material palette. One of the goals architecture for the building is to give an example of how to do something a little bit higher-designed with materials that are used very commonly in commercial. The landscaping plan here shows trees along the road. I'm not the landscape architect, but my understanding is this complies with all of the requirements, and there's one exception that we're asking for along the south. Our overall landscaping is, I believe, about 5% over the required, so we overall have more landscaping than is required. And I believe that's it.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicants? We have a few. Commissioner Sikowski.
Thank you. On the exterior, you mentioned the corrugated metal. I didn't hear, will that patina over time?
No, it's a kinar-coated metal, so it won't have any rusting or anything like that.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Quinney.
Thank you. Just two quick things. One, I just wanted to say, just publicly, I'm darned from my professional career at work, so I want to make sure that that's out there. But I remember we saw this through the DRC and seeing this again, I just remember how much I really liked this project. I think you guys have been a great job on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Luthy.
I actually think it's really gorgeous. I think it'll be a good fit for the area. My one question was, the landscaping that you're trying to not put in on the south, will that then be the responsibility of whoever's putting through it, the road? Is that what you're looking for?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yep, that was the problem.
Okay, so we are actually, we are putting landscaping in along the south. It's required that it's eight feet. There's a provision in the code that it can be reduced by 20%, so we've done that with other additions. So our other additions are, we have a kind of a courtyard landscaping element, and our overall landscaping expenditure is increased.
Okay, so you just meant, you meant that, you didn't mean the park strip portion and the sidewalk.
The park strip portion would go in with the future road. Correct. But this, what's shown here would go in with our development.
Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you. Again, I'm talking about the south end, where you're showing minimal landscaping. I'm more interested in seeing shaded landscaping for that parking area, rather than the smaller landscaping that you're showing.
Yeah, and I think we have provided shade trees in these tree diamonds here, but you're correct, there's not any large shade trees there. I think it might be, again, I'm not a landscape architect, but it may have been a width issue with that, but it's something that probably could be added.
Yeah, it makes it more attractive, less that, like, it was just not asphalt. You know, people don't want to park on hot asphalt or unless snow, or, you know, it's bushed there. But I think if we ask to or to put some shaded parking here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Luthy.
Look, you... Are you talking? Should we... I think looking at that, all the trees that are around there on the edge are in the actual park strip of the road, not on their property. So I think, again, when this street comes through, that that's probably where you're gonna get those trees, looking at the way it is around the other sides.
I believe that's correct.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, we'll reserve some time for you if there's anything we'd like to address after the public comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we have Mr. McCandless again on this item.
Thank you. Again, this is in the same development, part of Stone Creek, it's in the same subdivision, just a different lot. The applicant's described what the purpose of the building is. We walked through the landscape, and just to clarify, yes, there will be street trees required along that south property, like when the street grows in. Just to let you know, we did receive the preliminary site plan drawings for the park site development that you worked out in the past with Stone Creek. So we're currently reviewing that, just want to include the street improvements on there. We really don't have any concerns with this. Maybe roundabout at some point in the future... Maybe roundabout at some point in the future. Just, this is still a discussion, but the building's been set back to accommodate that if, if, whatever goes in. Right now, their design is just a D-intersection on 78. So with that, our recommendations for approval just again subject to the additions that are in the court.
Great, thank you, Mr. McCandless. Any questions for staff? See, none will open up this portion of the meeting to public comments. If anyone would like to address Highlands Health Center, please come forward to the podium. See, none will close the public comment section and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion leading to a possible motion. Commissioner Green.
I am going to go back to the first page. Sorry, I get used to this idea. I'm going to move that based on the findings set forth in this staff report, I move that the planning commissioner approve the preliminary and primary site plan and conditional use permit approval for the Highlands Health Center located at 5481 West 7800 South in the PC planned community zone with the conditions listed in Section 6 of this report.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to this motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan. Best wishes with Highlands Health Center. Item number five on the agenda is a text amendment to amend the 2009 City Code, Section 13-6H, Senior Housing Overlay District, to allow independent elderly housing, nursing homes, convalescent centers, and assisted living centers or similar uses in the PO zone with citywide applicability. Four Square Properties Incorporated is the applicant, with Dan Milich representing them. Mr. Milich, please come forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dan Milich, Director of Development for Four Square Properties. Local office is at 7533 South Centerview Court here in West Jordan. Pleasure to be here this evening and like to thank staff for their hard work on this and thank the public for being here this evening to participate as well. This process started about three years ago. Came into the city, met with a few of the council members, one who happens to be a planning commissioner now. And we talked about land uses on some of the properties that we control out adjacent to Jordan Landing. One of those properties was a 15.1 acre site on Center Park Drive. And if we could put that picture up, Ray, I appreciate it. It shows the overall Jordan Landing and the properties surrounding Jordan Landing that we still control. The Center Park Drive site is... That one there. Zone PO currently, it formerly was zoned Business Park. Four Square, back in 2006, rezoned it to Professional Office to try and spur development of that property at that time. It's sat vacant ever since. We have been approached by a couple of assisted living-type users who are very interested in that property. And we originally came in and talked with staff, again, about three years ago, two years ago, I guess, with staff, about changing the zoning code to allow assisted living in the PO zone with a conditional use permit. We discussed the merits of that. Basically, came to the conclusion that we should probably look at a more comprehensive approach. That comprehensive approach included us discussing and looking at surrounding jurisdictions. How do they deal with assisted living in the zones that they allow assisted living in or conditionally allow it in? And one of the things that we touched on was potential of utilizing an overlay zone. The city already is familiar with overlay zones. They have a handful of them in place. One is the senior housing overlay. We looked at the intent and the purpose of the senior housing overlay. How might we modify that text in order to be a little more comprehensive and allow for a inclusive way, allow for the many senior housing and senior care type of facilities in one location in the city? Now, I say one location, but the senior housing overlay can be applied in multiple zones. So in this case, what we did, working with staff, is look at definitions for uses within the senior housing overlay, modifying them to be more inclusive. And also proposing to allow that senior housing overlay to be applicable to and apply to additional zoning designations, the PO zone being one of them. So in the application of a senior housing overlay, that doesn't change. The applicability would be, or I'm sorry, the process for applying the senior housing overlay is a zone change. So to add that SHO designation to a property, it would come before the planning commission and the planning commission would make a recommendation. Then it would go before city council. And therefore, it would have a good level of scrutiny and review to see, is that particular use in that location appropriate or not? And you could put the safeguards in place as necessary to either allow it or not allow it, depending on the merits of the project. I'm kind of rambling on here. I wanted to keep my presentation short because you have a long agenda. So I think staff did a great job in the staff report, brought out all the other items. I don't think there's really anything else that I need to touch on except to say that we would hope to have planning commission's support of this item. Again, appreciate staff's efforts. And I look forward to address any questions that you may have in this item.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Doesn't look like we have any. We'll reserve some time for you later on if need be.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. McCandless, you're doing such a great job. You might as well keep going on and take this item as well.
I really don't have a lot to add to what the applicant has stated. He's given you what the background is, what the purpose is. We've looked at the examples from other cities and we really felt that rather than to just simply create a conditional use in the Professional Office District, it would be much easier just to simply add it to the senior housing overlay because the information that we've seen closely matches what's in already in that SHO district. So our recommendation is simply for approval, subject to how we got it laid out in the legislative draft.
Great, thank you, Mr. McCandless. Any questions for Mr. McCandless or anyone else on staff? Commissioner Green.
So the way I read this, and I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. Currently, the senior housing overlay can be in R2, R3, RM, PC, PRD, and then a bunch of them in the west side planning area that really doesn't exist anymore, or kind of did, but not anymore. And then we're just adding the PO zone to that. Okay? And then the last thing is that the density is controlled by us as part of the development plan approval. So we're really just... Does, I guess the question is, for all the other zones, the density is whatever the zone allows, but in PO, we have... It's because there's a development plan and we would control the density on that?
Correct. Correct. The PO zone would be the only one that we control the density in. Those others are, as you mentioned, established in those underlying zoning districts. The PO district doesn't have any of those, so that's what we have.
Okay.
Great, thank you for the information. Let's open this item to public comment. If anyone would like to speak regarding the text amendment, please come forward at this time. We'll close the public comment section and bring it back to discussion by the commission. Commissioner Luthy.
I guess I will make a motion then. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to amend the 2009 City Code, Section 13-6H, Senior Housing Overlay District, to allow independent elderly housing, nursing home, assisted living centers, or similar uses in the PO Professional Office Zone.
Thank you. Commissioner Sukoski.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Luthy and a second by Commissioner Sukoski. Any discussion in motion? See, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Best wishes, Mr. Milich. Thank you. Item number six on our agenda this evening is Highlands Markets, northeast corner of 7800 South and 5600 West. General Plan Land Use Map Amendment for 22.5 acres from very low-density residential to community commercial and very high-density residential and rezone 22.5 acres from RR-20D and RR-1D to SC-2 Zone and R-3-22 Zone. Peterson Development LLC, Justin Peterson is the applicant. Are you here this evening? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission. My name's Paul Stringham. I'm covering for Justin tonight. He couldn't be here.
Great, thank you.
So happy to be here tonight. I do represent Peterson Development on this project. This is the continuation of the Highlands area there that we are working with. We've been successful and continuing to find success with the Smith Center across the street on the northwest corner with our development there. And we're pleased that Smith's is doing well there and we are looking forward to our continued progress there. We've got two other retail buildings there on the northwest corner that is under construction right now. We are fortunate in that we own all four corners and so we are trying to create this sense of community within this intersection and in this area. We've done and continue to do a lot of residential development in West Jordan and have a great relationship with staff, planning commission, and city council. And we appreciate the relationship that we have. So tonight, we're here focusing on the northeast corner. And what is really driving this northeast corner of approximately 22 acres is we have IHC that we've been negotiating with and working with. If I can learn how to work with technology here. There we go. IHC is looking to purchase approximately four acres here on the, what would be the northwest corner of this 22-acre piece. We've been working with IHC for the last year and they're very excited to be there. And we are looking to be under contract with them within the next week, possibly this week, we're all ready for signature. We are looking to as well create some senior housing here for 55 years of age and older. It is a higher-density use there, of course, for people my age and older. We believe that it serves a great buffer to the community there to the east primarily because of the residential. It's a great buffer there with the structure, with the use there, and also with the road there at 5490. And then we have, that senior housing is approximately eight acres. We have another 10 acres approximately right here for community commercial that we're looking to rezone for various commercial uses. Trying to create, again, still more sales tax dollars here for the city and trying to create still a sense of community in the Highlands there. Don't know of the uses at this point in time or the players or the tenants, the people or the groups that would be purchasing or ground leasing that property. So this is all in concept only. So staff's been great to work with. We're working with Nanette. And that's just questions for me. I'll turn the time for Nanette.
Well, great, thank you. Before we do that, do we have any questions from the commission for the applicant? Commissioner Luthy.
I don't know if you already said this, I might have missed it, but the area that you want to put into the senior housing?
Yes.
Is that somebody, you already have somebody that wants to take on that development?
No, we would take on that development as a developer. Peterson Development, correct.
Okay, is it going to be, what type of senior housing are you thinking a lot of?
Well, senior housing, 55 years of age and older. It'd be very similar to the Coventry Cove project in Riverton.
Okay.
That's a good project to compare it to. This week, we are looking to construct a three-story project there of about 170 units. We recognize this is higher density. And these are, of course, attached units. This is the first, we feel like this is a great benefit for a few reasons. One of them is that this is the first project of its kind in the community there. And again, we feel like it's a great buffer from the commercial, from the noise of commercial buffering to the residential there to the east.
And they're independent living, they're not assisted living?
Yes, independent living. Great point, thank you. Independent living. We are looking to create and allow for a healthcare component there too as people get more elderly and there's a need there. So we would like to be able to provide those services.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Ms. Larson, you have this for the city.
Thank you. So I feel the applicant did a good job of reviewing the proposed future land use map amendment and rezone. The overall acreage of the proposed amendments is 22.5 acres. And that's going from very low-density residential to commercial and very high-density residential. A portion of the rezone will include the R3-22 SHO zoning district. So that would be multifamily residential, 22 units or less per acre with the overlay, the senior housing overlay district. And that senior housing overlay district will require that only senior housing is allowed in that zone. The attached concept plan, it is required that a concept plan is attached to the application for a proposed rezone. So this concept plan that's on the screen here will be changing once a subdivision in the preliminary site plan is submitted. This project is next to two arterial streets. These are, these will be heavily trafficked streets with a maximum width per arterial street of 125, 26 feet. And it is just east of an established commercial site. Because of these things and that the proposal meets the criteria listed in the zoning ordinance that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to city council to amend the future land use map and to rezone on this 22.5 acre property.
Great, thank you, Ms. Larson. Any commissions for, any commissions? How about any comments for, now, there's enough commissions going on. Any comments for staff? All right, thank you. We'll open up the public comment section then. And we'll reserve some time for you if anything comes up during that section that you'd like to address.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. If you would like to speak on this item, Highland Markets, you're welcome to. We have three people who have signed up in advance, so we'll go with them first. We have Ms. Laurel Lemits of 5423 Bridal Vista Circle. Hopefully, I said that correctly. You can correct my pronunciation when you come up.
It's Lemits, Laurel Lemits.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me tonight. Approximately five years ago, Peterson Development was asking to do something similar to this. And the residents in the adjoining area where we live showed that, and voiced their opinions, that this was something that they did not want to see, something that they were told that would not be in the future of that corner and that we wanted to see homes that were comparable to what we have. As a resident of that area, I looked for that area for about three or four years to find integrity where I wanted to live. And I found that and would like to continue that. We know that development is imminent in this valley. This is just what we're faced with. To keep things the same is not an answer. And so we do know that development needs to happen. Please keep the development in what the residents would like to see happen there. I'm concerned about crime access to the area with additional commercial in that area also. I was also told that West Jordan wants high-density housing next to commercial as a buffer. But I would also like to point out that across the street in the Smith's Development, that there is the Smith's Store and right next to that is the new Ivory Development. There is no high-density commercial or high-density housing that butts up to that. There is no high-density commercial or high-density housing that butts up to that. Also, excuse me. As you have talked about tonight, there's been a lot of commercial that is going on along 7800 South, and so I'd just like to bring your attention to that. We feel that as a community, we would like to still keep that as a residential area. There's plenty of commercial in that area. There, also, there's the new Mountain View Development that was just approved, that will have a lot of commercial in there also, and so we as residents in that area feel that there's plenty of commercial, that the integrity of the place where we live, we would like to keep in that section the same as what we have there and enjoy and appreciate in living here in West Jordan. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Mr. Richard, starts with a D, I apologize, I don't, oh, thank you, Downey. 5457 Saddle Mount Circle.
Thank you for the opportunity to voice an opinion again. When we purchased this property, it was also part of Peterson Development, and we were told by our contractor that the property behind us on the west side of us, which is the property being discussed tonight, would be a low-density residential, which is third to half-acre lots, which is the area that we live in. For 13 years, we've had confidence that this would be the case, that it would continue to be that way. Several years ago, as was pointed out earlier, Peterson Development has tried to change the zoning, and City Council was sided with the residents that that property should stay as was originally planned. So it's our desire that a three-story complex for seniors, I mean, I'm a senior, someday I may have to go to one of those complexes where I don't have to take care of the property. But a three-story complex there is going to cut the views off of the Ocker Range for all the people that are going to be affected by it, which is at least seven or eight lots. And it's just going to the extreme. I think we should stay with the residential part, and I personally feel for the utilities also, that you put that many apartments is going to use a lot of utilities, especially water, and that's my biggest concern. I've dealt with water for years in the past, and I just don't see where the main pipe that's coming out of the mountains with water in it is going to be able to handle the water for all the high-density areas that contractors seem to want to put in. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Downey. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Mr. Craig Christensen, 5447 Saddle Mount Circle.
Counsel, thank you for listening to your public. I live on 5447 Saddle Mount Circle, which is the corner lot just across the street within 126 feet of this development. And what I'd like to say is, I too ditto, the change is a little abrupt, that within 126 feet, we would transition very starkly from low-density and very low-density housing to high-density housing without any other transitions in between of style or market. Second point is the protection of private property as private, that when you put a three-story building next to a single-family residence, within 150 feet, you then have constant overlook for kids and grandkids, and that perception of private property then kind of shrinks, and that perceived value kind of feels like our lots are not our own sometimes. The third point here is safety. We have a single-family dwelling on a half-acre lot, that's one of the 20,000 square foot lots, and we have four drivers in our household. If we were to then compare that to 170 drivers on the next street over, 5490, then it begs questions of safety, thoroughfare. For instance, I would like to cite West Jordan Police Case Number 16H003838, where with the increased traffic on 7800 South, a road wheel off of a vehicle, not the whole vehicle, just the tire, popped off and struck the vinyl fence there. So there's a follow-up question too, that is, what are the councils and the planning commission's plans to reinforce and protect the neighbors of this development as traffic increases, as larger vehicles are introduced, and as it increases? So with that, we have a good history of this council supporting business and residents. In 2006, my wife and I brought a home-based business into this area, and this council decided to encourage us and support us in moving to a commercial location, which we did, and it's also West Jordan-based business, and we trust in the precedent that has been established to listen to residents and their preferences for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Please come forward. If you'd please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time today. My name is Amy Maritz, M-A-R-T-Z, and I live on 5438 West Bridal Vista Circle, also here at the cul-de-sac. So earlier last year, you rezoned the area to my north, which was also rural residential, and put it a large cul-de-sac with many homes. Now you're rezoning the area to my east or west, also rezoning. When I moved in, I was very careful to check the area, to see how it was zoned around me. It feels patently unfair to renege twice, frankly. I'd like to challenge this directly from the staff report under criteria four. The discussion section says presently this site has a future land use designation of very-low-density residential. Very-low-density residential is typically a holding zone before a development environment has been established in the vicinity of the site. And I'd like to challenge that philosophy, because when residents move in, they look at the area, they rely on your zoning ordinances and your zoning patterns to select a home in that area, and twice now, you're asking us to sacrifice our decisions we made carefully to move into a low-density residential, rural residential area, and sacrifice that not once, but twice. I think, my mother lives in the senior housing in West Jordan. It's a lovely facility. It's two-story. I would not want my mother looking down over into my backyard of my home as sweet as she may be. So I feel like a three-story facility directly across the street from our homes is inappropriate. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Maritz. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Please state your name and address, sir. Thank you.
Dave Ritten. I'm at 5416 West Bridal Vista Circle. I agree with all the comments that have been spoken so far today. I agree that a three-story building certainly would block the views and really would not be something that would improve the area that we live in currently. Additionally, as we have experienced before, we've had two other zoning meetings, and it always seems, even though there's tremendous input from the community, we always seem to not be the ones who win in most cases. So I'm here to support the residents. We want to keep it the way it is. We want to have the low-density residential. You know, if they wanted to put a senior living facility where it was single-family, single-story homes, I don't know that we would, I would be opposed to that personally, because I think seniors are great neighbors, but to have a high-density apartment-style senior living three stories high, I think that's just not a good fit for this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Please come forward, sir. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Sun, and we live at 5448 West Saddle Mount, which would be directly across the street from your high-rise, which would be horrible for us. We have a beautiful community. We all live in a nice, quiet cul-de-sac, and you want to put a three-story building right in our backyard, and I know you would all like to live there. We very much enjoy where we live, but this will completely destroy our neighborhood and our community, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
David Barber, 7411 South, 5490 West. I live on that private road that you all are talking about. I just found out about this earlier this afternoon, and I didn't see any signs that were posted on this property indicating that this rezone was taking effect. But anyway, I'm here, and my specific question is not so much on what's going to be built there, but the road, 5490. I'd like to know from staff what is planned for that road, if it's going to be widened to accommodate in this particular area, or what is, is this just going to be a standard? And specifically also, 13 years ago, there was some drainage put in there, going from 78 South to the north part where this is happening, will go to west to the cul-de-sac that's, or the roundabout that's out there. And I'd like to know if that would be replaced or if that is sufficient for that street at this time. That's the specific question that I have. I'd just like to know about that this evening. Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Barber. We'll ensure to address the road and drainage issues you brought up. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Would this be as a resident?
I'm not a resident. I'm the applicant.
But sorry, just meaning as a public comment.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yes, so, you know, I'm not sure if I'm in the...
Anyone's welcome to speak. I just didn't know who was going to be...
Yeah, no, I, no, you know, I, again, I'm representing the developer and work with Peterson Development, have for a number of years. We respect and understand the concerns that these residents have, and we as a developer would do all we can to, again, enhance and create value and to maintain values of residents. I think you need, we all need to look at the both sides of the coin. If I were in their shoes, I understand, if I lived right next door to this, I understand that. At the same point in time, we also acknowledge and recognize you have a freeway coming in just a, you know, a tenth, two-tenths of a mile from this area. It's going to be a major freeway that UDOT has been planning, and really, frankly, the city needs this, the community, the city needs this, all the municipal municipalities here need that. You have 5600 West, 7800 South that are major arterial ways, a lot of traffic. You look at a 10, 15-year range of traffic, you're going to have tens of thousands of cars on these streets. And so, you know, it's incumbent upon all residents to understand to do their homework prior to moving into an area, which I'm not disputing that. I'm not saying they have not, but to understand that there is growth. West Jordan, I think, has surpassed the growth of South Jordan right now. Congratulations. And Utah's one of the fastest-growing communities in the country, and it's something we all have to understand and accept. I think it's also important to understand that at some point in time, we are limited in this valley with growth. On the east with the Wasatch Mountains and the Olker Mountains on the west, it's a linear market. You have to grow north and south. There will come a time when all this ground will be developed, and there will come a point when you're going to have to be going more vertical, and I think we're all looking at this going, really? Is that true? But I see that in other communities throughout the country, and at some point in time, may not be in my lifetime, but we'll see that more vertical, more vertical going in. So again, we're just, we're relying on staff and their support, and we too want to do what's right for the community, and recognize as well that this 22 acres is pretty standard as far as the commercial development. This is a hard corner. It's a commercial corner there on the northeast corner. We've done other commercial developments of that same size, and it's on a hard commercial corner where you're going to have major traffic. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the residents and their concern. We would do all we can to make sure it's right. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who has not previously spoken? Great, seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and bring us back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Sukoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to commend the community for coming out and talking about what their opinions are, and I know, I've been on the commission now for two and a half years, and you guys are a good, tight-knit community, and I know that because whenever there's an issue that bothers you guys, you come out in force, and I think that's commendable. I'm afraid that what I'm going to say is probably not going to be 100% liked by you guys, but please bear with me in understanding why, I'm going to try to articulate why I feel the way I do. First is balancing what residents want. Like, I can appreciate why you guys maybe wouldn't want a three-story building right next to your house, but the residents that are west in West Jordan from your subdivision have had to drive either into Magna or out to Harriman or all the way into Jordan Landing, which is a 20-minute drive from the west side, to obtain any kind of services. So that being said, we have the Smiths now, which is great, but there aren't any other services out on that west end of the valley. And because of that, I hear what you're trying to say, and I appreciate it, but as far as planning and development goes, commercial really belongs on arterial routes where 5600 West and 7800 South, the busy roads are, there's really not a better location for commercial in our city as far as 90th South, those major arterial routes. We don't want to put commercial development within a subdivision or within routes where the majority of the citizens can't get to or obtain those services. So I understand why you don't want it, but at the same time, from a city development perspective, this, it makes sense to go there. There's a perception of private property that was brought up, and I hear this all the time on the commission, it's, well, the builder told me. I was told by the builder that I would not have my view of the mountains block. I was told by the developer that I wouldn't have. Well, the reality is, is the city is a very dynamic and breathing entity. It changes over time. What the needs were when you moved in 15 years ago are very different than what the needs on the west side of the valley are now. And you guys have this beautiful neighborhood. I know, I've driven through it. I love that section of West Jordan. It is beautiful, and I do envy you. I would like to live in that neighborhood. But the reality is, there's, a lot of the lots west are much smaller density, and the services that are going to be provided along 7800 South in the commercial district are needed there. They're desperately needed there by those citizens. As far as water issues that were brought up, large lots of sod take a whole lot more water than high-density building do, and that's just what it is. I'm not suggesting that we build all high-density units by any means, but as far as utilities go, we have to meet standards and make sure that the utility, the utilities will service that area before we can build there. So I know you're probably not going to like what I have to say, but I feel like this area is, this is a good area for this kind of a development. I would rather see these kind of services being put on along an arterial route as a buffer between the major roads and subdivisions than trying to fit this stuff piecemeal into subdivisions or, you know, remnant lots that we've had major problems with in the city in the past. So I'm in favor of this development. had major problems with in the city in the past. So, I'm in favor of this development.
Commissioner Hassan.
Thank you. I, I do understand the people that live on the larger lots being really unhappy with the high density. I, I kind of have a question for staff. Because there is no other residential here, what do we do about the 17%? We just don't even bother with that due to the fact that this is not going to have any other residential there because this is about 17%.
So, thank you for the question. So, you're, you're alluding to the, the city's ordinance on the captain grade of multifamily. The 17% does not factor in if you do senior housing? If this was regular market rate, regular multifamily, then yes, you would be correct. They would not be able to, to go in as a standalone product. But because this is exclusive 55 and older, that, that does not, it's not applicable. So, they can go in and develop that?
I myself am going to disagree a little with my partner here next door. We do need to have commercial property. You people that are living on the larger lots do have to travel ways to get services. But I would prefer to see this whole piece of property going through a commercial development rather than have the high-density as a portion of it adjacent to the larger lots. I think it's a much better project, better use of the land if it was entirely done in a, a commercial-type business. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hassan. And Mr. Langford, did you have other comments that you wanted to add to the conversation?
Yes, I would. Just to address some of the questions that came up from citizen comment. Again, the, the site plan that was presented is, is just a concept. But based on that fairly workable concept, I did a rough measurement in your least 200 feet from the neighborhood to the, to the east to, to the building, to the, to the senior housing development. And yes, they've indicated they'd like to build a three-story building. The maximum height allowed in the R3 zone is 30 feet. Same as every other residential zone in West Jordan. Whether it's the, the existing neighborhood to the east or any other, it's, it's 30 feet. And that's measured at the midpoint of the trest of the roof. So, so three stories may sound daunting, but it is maxed at 30 feet, which matches their, their development to the, to the east. This is maybe a clarification Nate needs to provide, but my understanding is that 5490 is a collector road, which is 60, is it a 70-foot? 70-foot wide rideaway. So, I believe the concept showed it at 60. They would actually need to expand and widen that. And then lastly, Mr. Barber asked about the posting of the property. Noticing this meeting, that, that always takes place prior to the city council. Notices that go out within 300 feet of, of this site. It's noticed outside of the newspaper. But the actual posting of the property isn't a done tell just prior to the city council meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Langford. So, we've addressed the height, the width of the road, the posting. Since we're discussing the citizens' comments, Mr. Barber also addressed drainage. That be for Mr. Nelson?
It would actually be more appropriate to be addressed at another time since this is a land use issue and not a utility design issue. I can say as the road is, gets built, it will be designed to have, to, to capably handle all the drainage that it needs during the road and adjacent developments. Where everything's connected and, and the size of everything is, is too early to say.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And just for further clarification for the public comment, what that basically means is that should this go through, there are other levels of inquiry and studies that will be done and will address all of those permanent issues. Thank you. Commissioner Green.
My first, my first question may be, Mr. Hunter, you can answer this one, or, or on the zoning amendment. It's a, this, we're doing an all or nothing here. We can't, we can't approve part of this, can't, and reject part of it.
So, I mean, there are two components to what you're doing. There's the, let's go back to your main page. But yeah, you are looking at a future land use map amendment and a rezone. And you can put forth a different recommendation as to each, if that's what you're saying.
But as far as the property goes, it's, it's one for the whole property.
Oh, so you're talking about piecemeal zoning, a whole piece versus portions?
I'll, I'll tell you where I'm going here in a second, but...
I mean, it, it is all one application for the whole 22-plus acres. I mean, it's, it's not beyond your purview to make a recommendation to, that the zones area should be smaller or larger, if that's probably what you're saying. It's a little unusual, but you can make any recommendation that's, if you felt like that maybe not the whole piece should be rezoned, or you might consider slightly different zoning. That's, that's all within your purview to make a recommendation on.
Okay.
My, my counsel, if you go that route, if you can just clearly articulate for, for the council.
So, here's, here's where I'm going with this. I agree with, I agree with you 66% of the property. I agree with Judy and Commissioner Hansen 100%. I think, what I'm, looking at this, I have absolutely no problems putting IAC Medical Center on that piece of property. Looking at this piece of property, I have no problems putting an SC2 zone on this piece of property on, on 7800 South. What I have a problem with is putting 8.223 acres of high-density senior housing when everything else around it is RR1D, PC, 30th and 20th. And that's where I have the problem. And so, if, if I were king for a day, if I were king for a day, I'd approve the two-thirds of it and we'd forget the other half and make it commercial. That's where, that's where I would go with this. Commissioner Pack, I'm going to use you as an example. Last, last Thursday night when you were interviewing for city council, you talked about economic development in this city. And I agree with that 100%. I think we built too many rooftops in this city and we're not building the appropriate economic development for this city. I believe that adding another 170 rooftops violates that fundamental process of the general plan. I think putting that many houses or that many people into that area, the applicant talked about the increase in traffic along 56 and 78 with the freeway going in, adding 170 units just complicates that. So, from my perspective, I, I agree with Commissioner Hansen. I think this piece of property ought all be commercial. And, and, and I, I think it'd be easier to live with. I don't know what the neighbors think, but if I were a neighbor, I'd rather, I'd rather have all commercial there that I could do my, you know, do business with than deal with 170 units. But I'm not sure you'd get 170 units in in three stories and 30 feet. But that's a different story. So, that's where I'm going with this, is that if we have to vote all or nothing, I would vote against this. If we can vote to say, yeah, we can rezone part of it so that the IAC Medical Center could continue to go in, I would buy that. But if we're talking about, we have to approve, we have to make a recommendation on the senior housing overlay, I'll be against this particular project.
Commissioner Luthy.
So, remind me again what the commercial land use height is? So, the medical center or other commercial buildings that may go in here, how tall are they allowed to get? 25, is that what you're saying? 35? So, potentially, if you put that all commercial, you still could get something potentially taller than the senior housing in that location. I'm a really big fan of large lots. We looked long and hard. I'm actually on a third of an acre. So, we looked long and hard trying to find that. So, I get where you're coming from. But I do agree that this location right here is a commercial zone. It makes sense to put commercial along this. It's, it's a real, it's a real struggle on that because I hate to say, yep, we're getting rid of all these large lots when I really like large lots and I think the city needs more large lots. But this location with everything that's right here and right off the freeway makes sense to put some commercial development along that area. The one thing that I am a little, and I, I agree with that, and I agree with your comments, as far as putting in the senior housing right there, is if you put commercial, even if it was 35 feet, it's not the neighborly sit out on your porch, stare in the backyard kind of approach. So, I think that by eliminating that, you would eliminate some of the concerns you had as far as the neighbors were worried about people looking into their lots. But it is going to go taller going commercial versus the high-density residential. So, that's my thoughts on it.
Commissioner Sokowski.
Thank you. Just something to remember with the looking over the fence thing, was, it was pointed out that, that there's a 200-foot buffer between where that building will be. And remember that the 35 foot or the 30 foot is to the center of the trest. So, to the window, you're going to have probably six feet, minimum of four feet from that center of the trest lying down. So, you're really 20-some, you know, 25, 28 feet maybe if somebody's really tall, to be able to look out. And at 200 feet in between, that's a really oblique angle. There's still going to be a fair amount of privacy in that backyard. And, and as was also pointed out, that's the same structural height that's allowed for the residential houses in that large lot neighborhood. So, that's no different really. In, in some regard, that's better than having a, a backdoor neighbor that's got the same-sized house. They're, they're going to have a much steeper angle to look over into the yard than, than this unit would have to look in, into yards. So, that just, that's just food for thought. Just to address your point and, and your point, Commissioners, I, I'm with you on, in the sense that I like the idea of commercial overall. I, I do like that. Better than having very high-density residential senior housing in here. However, what I would be concerned with is if we made this a large plot and said that only, like an SC2, we're looking for some sort of a large single-use unit to go in there. We have a problem in West Jordan already with large single-use units going dormant after a period of time. And, personally, I believe that that's because the model of large-box stores and driving to these stores for shopping is, is kind of going away in a sense with Amazon and online shopping and things like that. I would just caution us when, when we make this decision to think about that. Do we want this? I'm sure whatever goes in there is going to attract a lot of attention now. But 10 years from now, is that store going to have problems with blight like we have in large-box store sections on major routes in our city now? So, would we be better off approving something that has smaller units or, or approving something that's large as, as one single use? Just, just food for thought.
Great. Thank you. So, how about, let me ask, if you don't mind, some of the commissioners some follow-up questions then. So, Commissioner Sokowski, it's not my understanding it would need to be a big-box unit here. It could be broken up into smaller establishments. So, what, what, why are you thinking that this would become a big-box retail?
I just worry that by breaking it up into a large section, that, that smaller retail businesses that wouldn't necessarily have the budget to build a large unit would be less, I guess, less attracted to the property where it's, it's proposed right now. It's pitched as small-unit boutique-sized stores. So, I'm not saying that it can't go that way. It sure could go that way. But usually, when you leave a larger lot, what you try and get is a larger store. And so, I just, I'm just concerned that if we allow, if we change it to a large unit like that, then we would end up with one large unit. And I don't know that that's necessarily a great thing. And I know that's just purely my opinion.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Green, a question for you regarding, it seemed that you had an issue with the 30-foot rooftop for the senior housing center, but now that we have the conversation of commercial being able to be even taller at 35, does that, can you speak to that? Was that your main concern, was the height? Because I understand with single-family, you know, you have, it's broken up, even though a single-family unit can be just as tall at 30 feet. Granted, it's broken up and the skyline can still be viewed versus a really block building. Just trying to understand your thoughts on that.
I'm not as concerned about the height. All things being equal, and, and there will be some people out there that don't like this, but 30, 35 feet, it's all the same thing to me. I don't think, to me, 35 and 40 is almost the same thing when you look at the height of this building. My bigger concern is that if you look at this concept plan, and I know that we're not talking about concept plans here, we're talking about a future land use map. But you can see the, the community commercial, how it lines 5600 West, goes around 7800 South. It's not inconceivable for those same kind of development to go around into the senior housing area and just continue that continuity and flow around there and have the small boutique-type businesses there. I just think that what's incompatible on this, in this rezone request, and I think that's the way I word it, is that I'm, I'm not against the medical offices there and I'm not against the community commercial. What I'm against is the, the senior housing overlay part of this project because I think that's incompatible, first off, I think it's incompatible with the, the neighborhood and I think it's incompatible with the rest of the land use in this particular area. And, and that's where I'm going, is that, you know, if, if that, if that community commercial went all the way around the rest of the, the rest of the development, around the, I guess that's west side or east side, around the east side of the property, I'd be voting for it. And I, and I wouldn't even bat an eye to vote for that if this were entirely commercial, given, given the nature of what this city needs and where this location is on this corner. What I have a problem with is I believe the senior housing in that particular environment is incompatible with the, the rest of the, the area. I know why it's there. I get why Peterson Development wants to put it there. I, I, I understand the rationale and everything else, but from my perspective, I think it's incompatible.
Well, thanks, Commissioner Green. And I'm just trying to flush out the conversation a little more here. So, for instance, Ms. Martin's mentioned, you know, people moving into the area rely on the current zoning to make that decision. Now, Commissioner Sokowski very well said that, you know, if it's just a builder saying, hey, we don't plan on, you know, obstructing the skyline, you know, that's one thing. But when residents do their due diligence homework, you know, we come across this all the time as planning commissioners and I know city council has this as well, where you have the property rights of the adjacent owners trying to mesh with the property rights of the landowner to do what he or she wants with his or her parcel of land. But then if we have the component that will now rear, you know, task with changing what once was, you know, that adds a whole different layer to it. So, I just want to make sure that this conversation is definitely flushed out. The conversation, the applicant mentioned that we need to go vertical. And granted, you know, there is a component of that, but we have the most open land out of any city. And yes, we are growing and certainly I'm not saying everything should be one level. But, but it is the conundrum here. And Commissioner Green, I, I like, and was thinking the same thing prior to you mentioning it, if we could parcel this out and not have the quote-unquote "high-rise" portion going in, you know, commercial makes more sense. But then we're back to square one again, when commercial could be even higher than the... back to square one again, when commercial could be even higher than the independent living facility. So I just wanted to articulate that to see what you, as Commissioners, have to say about it, so we can make sure we're making the most informed decision, the best decision for the highest and best use for this parcel property. Commissioner Sokowski, did you still have more to say?
Yes, I have one more comment.
Thank you.
And then I will be done. First, to address what you just spoke on, Chairman, I commend people that do their due diligence and look at the zoning when they move in. I think that's really responsible and great. A city, especially West Jordan, well, I know a lot of people moved out here because it was one of the only areas that had a lot of open land left. But now we're faced at this point with the valley as a whole, where we're one of the only areas with a lot of open land left. And because of that, everybody is looking at West Jordan for their development projects. And the concept in construction and development and design has changed significantly in the last 15 years. And that doesn't mean that the Brattlebell community was wrong about the way that they did, or that the design element that's in now is wrong. But like I stated before, a city is very dynamic. It's constantly changing. And the needs of what an area are 15 years ago versus what the needs of the area are now, I mean, consider for just a moment Salt Lake City proper, if the zoning was to remain what it was when it was enforced initially, then none of us would have houses. This is all agricultural green built. And so it has to change within reason. And I don't want anybody to feel like their property values can plummet. I don't want anybody to feel like we're ruining their neighborhood. I really don't. My last comment would be to consider this. Jim Jacobs is a famous planner, and one of his concepts was eyes on the street. Personally, if I had been in the Brattlebell community and this was a concept that was being looked at to develop against my property, I personally would prefer to have single-family housing or to have the senior housing as my neighbor because it provides a buffer of humanity, where people that are living there, they care about the property. They're going to be the eyes on the street. They're going to care about those houses that are adjacent. Versus, if you have community commercial right adjacent to your property, that's a very dark back corner with your property fences right up against it. I would prefer to have people looking at my back fence and perhaps calling the cops if somebody's doing nefarious activity back there versus having a dark corner where, you know, things could go wrong. That's just my personal opinion. But where you have the potential of having a 30-foot-high rooftop there on the senior housing or a 35-foot-high rooftop of commercial, to me, it makes sense more to have the eyes on the street in between my house and the commercial community that's going in. And that's all I'm going to say.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I look at this piece of property, and it is on 7,800 south. It is on 5,600 west. Eventually, it will be on a very busy freeway. And I feel like it doesn't need to be a big box. I don't know that a big box would be interested in going here. I don't know that. I'm certainly not a developer. But wouldn't it be nice for those people who live adjacent to this to be able to go to the medical offices if their child is hurt or they're hurt, dentist offices, optometrist? These are things that they don't have readily available in that area. They have to travel a distance to get, to give those services. And so that's why I feel like it would be better off to be a commercial piece of property rather than having the high density within it. I can see that this would be a big benefit to those people who live surrounding it, that they would have services that they do not have available to them now. I mean, Smiths eventually will bring something in, but they haven't as of yet. And so I do believe that this is a great place for these smaller boutique, if you want to call them that, but medical offices or dental offices, optometrists, that type of thing. Even a small boutique, you know, for children's clothing or women's clothing or whatever. So that is the reason I feel strongly against the high-density housing.
Thank you. So just to clarify, because I know Commissioner Green spoke to this earlier, staff, could you please clarify for us? We can't approve part of this, but not the other part? It's all or nothing? Or I was a little confused at that, Mr. Murray.
Yeah. So here especially where you've got three different subunit areas. You've got one area that's 4.28 acres. You've got one area that's 8.223 acres. You have another that's a little over 10 acres. You could recommend approving one of those areas and not the others, or two of those areas and not the other. The thing to take into account, however, is you probably ought to make very clear what the basis is, so you're sending a clear recommendation to the council. You also might want to ask the applicant because the applicant may say, "Well, if I'm not going to get all of it, I'd rather not have a recommendation as to any," you know, that's another item that you'd probably rather consider. But it is perfectly within your purview to make those kinds of recommendations. The power to approve, to recommend approval of the entire rezone includes the power to recommend approval of only part of the rezone. The major issue is just with clarity, giving your recommendation to the council so they understand why you're recommending what you're recommending.
Great, thank you, Mr. Murray. Commissioner Green.
So with that, I was going to make a motion based on your recommendation. I'm going to move to suspend the rule so we can ask the applicant a question.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Mr. Stringham, would you like to come back up, sir? And could you please speak to the comments that many Commissioners have had? For instance, if the 4.28 acres of SC2 and the 10.002 acres of SC2 were to be okay with the Commissioners, but not the 8.223 acres of the very high density, would you be in favor of moving forward, or does that not work for you?
No, I'll answer that question, but I have a question as well, if I could address that. If we go with the two-thirds of it, with the 10 acres and the four acres with the SC2 zone, can we come by, can we come at another time, point in time, with our position to try to continue the rezone, of course, for the eight acres? And the only reason I say that is because there are thousands of boxes in this city, excuse me, in the country that have gone dark. And you're correct, Commissioner, that Amazon and e-commerce has taken over bricks and mortar. The district is having big problems. Jordan Landings having big problems. And the other point that I would make, because that's a really strong point, the other point, you're not going to get the small boutiques back there. You're too far off the road, far too off the road. Construction costs are at a peak. They ebb and flow. I understand that. But construction is always going to be too expensive to construct something back there for a small mom-and-pop, so to speak, tenant and be viable business there. It's hard enough to get them on a hard corner at the Smith Center, very difficult. Property taxes are just enormously high. They're not going down. So to make this all commercial and to think we can get retail back there will not happen. We won't get a junior-acre box back there. They don't exist anymore. I really sincerely mean that. I've been doing this for 35 years. I've seen a huge change, even just since January 1st of this year. Look at Macy's, look at J.C. Penney, look at Payless Shoe Source, look at Gordmans, all of them, all of them that haven't already will be filing for Chapter 11. So I'll stick with the issue now. But that is a concern. The other concern too is the darkness that would come back there. If you were to try to make it commercial, it'd be a challenge. The only thing we could do is do more office. And if we go 35 feet high, I don't know that the neighbors as well are going to want to see daytime traffic up there of office overlooking residential. Don't know. So we would like to come back at some point in time. In answer to your question, I'm sorry I'm taking too much time. Yes, we would like to go approval for the four acres because we've been working for well over a year now with IHC. We really need to move forward. The services are needed here for both commercial and the limited commercial for IHC and the limited commercial there on the hard corner. But I still, we believe in the services of a senior care facility. I think it's a service that's needed. To make an area dynamic, you need to have different uses of multi-tenant use. So thank you. But in answer to your question, yes, we would.
Thanks for that information, Mr. Stringham. Commissioner Luthy, do you have a question for Mr. Stringham?
I do. I kind of gone back and forth on even asking it, but I just want to understand the difference between a very high density and a high density as far as if we were to do this. What does that break it down if you dropped it down to a high-density level? What are they looking at?
So a very high density, it's on page three of the staff report, would be R312, 16, 20, and 22. High-density residential would be 10 units or less per acre.
Okay, okay. That's all I wanted to, okay. But you are trying to get the maximum out of there. Like if we can come to a compromise with the neighbors that it would be of a smaller scale, would that be something you'd be open to?
You know, I'm not in a position to really answer that question too. Would we be open to that discussion? Yes. But I think we'd have to extend the planning commission for that decision. I'm just not in a position to, we'd have to look at our costs and see if we can make that palatable.
Okay.
Thank you for the question. That was a good one.
Commissioner Green.
I'm going to make a motion.
Commissioner Luthy, could you please turn off your microphone? Thank you. Commissioner Green.
I'm going to make a motion, but based on the information of finding set forth in the staff report and on the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward positive recommendation to the City Council to approve the amended land use map from very low density to community commercial and community shopping to, hold on, I'm reading this, to community commercial and to rezone the 4.28 acres to SC2 and to rezone the 10.02 acres to SC2. And at this point, defer on any zoning or land use map amendment for the 8.223 acres that border 5,490 west.
Commissioner Sokowski.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Sokowski. Mr. Murray, is that specific enough? If you were reading the minutes.
Yeah, I think with your discussion that you've had, I think you've got a fair number of points laid out as to why that's the case. The other thing is that assuming the council approves it this way, then just so the applicant knows, our ordinance does limit coming back for a rezoned ordinance for the same area. And I can't remember, Scott can tell me if it's a year or two, but that would be the other issue that...
It's a year, but it has to be if it's similar. If they were to change it slightly, reduce the density, then they could come back. My question with the motion, I guess we should wait for a second, but...
We have a second question, thank you.
The word defer, you know, defer, in my opinion, that's a negative recommendation on that particular section, you know. And the reason why I'd like for the commission to clarify that is moving it forward to the City Council, I would like the commission to articulate a specific finding or a couple findings as to why you don't feel comfortable supporting that 8.223 as R322.
Great. So Commissioner Green, would you like to craft an amendment to that motion to be more specific on what defer means and why? And probably deny is a better one.
All right. Well, I'll change the word from defer to deny. So approve the two, deny the third, and deny the 8.223 acres specifically under criteria, I think I'm going to refer specifically to criteria three, that the proposed amendment will not be compatible with other land uses or existing plan in the vicinity. Specifically, and that's what I'd say, specifically, it does not meet criteria three because it's not compatible with other land uses. And number four, it doesn't constitute an overall improvement to the adopted general land use plan amendment. I think those would be the two specific findings of fact.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Sokowski, will you accept that change?
I think somebody else is going to have to second it because, as my testimony before, I felt like it was a viable option for this area. So if somebody else wants to pick that up.
I'll second that.
We have the motion, the amended motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to that amended motion? All in favor, say aye. Sorry, hold on, one moment. Did we have something?
I just want to clarify, Larry, I guess I wasn't as clear enough, and Larry helped me think through my previous comment. The motion that the commission boards to the council on the, no, I can't talk, the denial portion, that only applies that a year or more term, I guess, or applies to a similar zone, only applies if the council follows through with the commission's recommendation and officially denies that request. So hopefully that's clear.
Right, right. Thank you. Because we're simply a recommending body to the City Council. So for those of you that attended this evening, you'll get the opportunity to do this again before the City Council. Okay, so to re-articulate what we have, we have a motion by, an amended motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Luthy.
I just have another question. Sorry, I'm full of questions tonight. If he were to change the amount that they're proposing at this time, would that be something that, so they didn't have to wait a year, would it be something that we'd be willing to look at now? Like if we postponed this and waited until we had an answer on whether or not he could reduce the amount of number of people that are going into the senior housing, is that something that we would be willing at this point to approve, is the question?
Good question. And/or we could table to a further meeting, because you do bring up a good question of, will it be the applicant with that year waiting period? Should the City Council decide to go forward?
I mean, if that's the holdup, if we would be willing to agree to it, and that's a discussion amongst the rest of the people, but if we were willing to agree to it, if they were to lower the amount of people that are going to wait to this.
The, yeah, just so that everyone knows, we're, so because something has been noticed to City Council, that precludes us tabling an item on our agenda, Mr. Murray?
So is your question that whether you can table this item?
Well, we, and I just want to make sure there aren't a lot of side conversations going on, so that we have the public record and everyone knows what's going on. The question has been posed. Well, if this has been noticed and agendized by the City Council, does that preclude us deferring a decision? It's just an option.
You can still table it, okay? We just have to correct the notice in the council.
Okay, thank you.
The City Council has the right, the authority to pick a zoning or a density that is less than what is being proposed. They have a discretion. But I guess there is a motion on the table and a second, and so that would speed some action on that.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Luthy?
Sort of.
A definite maybe?
Sort of.
So if the question is, do you have the ability, as I mentioned before, the ability... So, if the question is, do you have the ability, as I mentioned before, the ability to approve everything, the whole acreage includes the ability to recommend a rezone for part of the acreage, also the ability to grant the full zone also allows you the ability to grant or recommend approving some zone that's in between the current zone and that zone, so absolutely, I mean, that's the possibility. I've seen councils in rural areas where somebody comes in to try to change something from full acre to quarter acre zoning, and the council, and the planning commission recommends, no, we don't want to go to quarter, we want to go to third, and then the council agrees. I mean, here, we're just talking, you know, different types of zones, but the same concept, you can't do that, so. And like I say, you don't necessarily need the approval of the applicant, but like I say, a lot of times it makes sense. If he's not willing to go forward, it's kind of pointless to descend to the council direction.
Great, thank you. So, since we're in the discussion phase of the amended motion, if anyone wanted to recommend an amendment to that by downsizing the zone, now would be the time to, to do so. Commissioner Sokoski. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Luthy, did you have more to say? Sorry, thank you, Commissioner Sokoski.
I would just like to say that we could, well, we, we do need to remember that there's still plenty of time for the applicant to come up with what they want to say to the city council. We're, we're just making a recommendation, so my personal feeling is that we can let the motion go through as it is right now, as we have it standing, the council's going to read it, and, and then the argument can be brought for the council for this, this last part of the land.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Well, and I think at that point, it may give the applicant a buffer time to figure out what, what might be appropriate for the city council to put in there, that might be less density that actually matches for the neighborhood and become more compatible, so I think I agree with you.
Thank you. Any further discussion to the amended motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes five to two with Commissioners Quinney and Sokoski casting the dissenting votes. Seeing as how we have many items still on the agenda, and it's 8:15, in the interest to ensure we're at our best to give the appropriate respect to the agenda items that are coming up, I move that we take a five-minute recess to stretch our legs, get a drink. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sokoski.
Second.
Great, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned for five minutes. And we're back. Thank you. Hopefully that was a good break for everyone. Continuing on with item number seven on our agenda, text amendment, urban forestry ordinance, adding Chapter 18 Urban Forestry to Title 13 of the West Jordan Municipal Code concerning the management and health of city-owned trees with citywide applicability. Our great city of West Jordan is the applicant, and Ms. Larson, you have this item as well this evening?
Thank you. Yes, so the city is initiating this addition for Chapter 18 and Title 13. Tyne Nelson is actually been working on this, he's the city's urban forester, and I'll let him take the floor.
Great, thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for your time, and I am very grateful for your service. I've been an urban forester for about 12 years, Ariman, Provo, and here. And as I got here, I found that our current urban forestry ordinance really is lacking, particularly for a city of our size. And so I've brought this, there is, Nanette, is this the time to talk about the one that I, the one line I'd like to omit?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. We have a lot of issues that, that currently I have no authority or no ability to address, and, and this helps us so that we can do this. For example, the construction on 70th South, we don't have any authority to prune any trees that are not city-owned, and there were a lot of trees that were being damaged because they haven't been pruned, and as the traffic got shifted over, they were being pruned by semis. And, and it's not, not good for the health of the trees. And, and trees are very good, and I, I've been enjoying your comments about trees, and I was silently yelling, hurrah. So, with that, I, I'm very grateful for this opportunity, but there's, it's pretty straightforward, and it's going to be very beneficial for the city. But there is one, one item that was overlooked that, it's actually in Section 1318-8, oh, excuse me, -10, E subset 2, and it says there shall be clear space of 10 feet above any parking lane. That's what the case was on 70th, on the, particularly on the north side as the traffic was shifted over there. I would like to just strike that completely and go with item number three, so the numbers would adjust a little, making it go to 15 feet. And the reasoning behind that is that as we plow the roads with the snow plows, they would still be pruning those trees if, if they were allowed to remain at 10 feet rather than 15. And so, I don't know, that's pretty much all I had to say unless you have some questions.
Any questions? Ms. Larson, you have additional information?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate what Tyne was talking about. I think that he did a really good job at giving a overview of what the ordinance does. Planning staff, during our review of the proposed Chapter 18 in Title 13 of the zoning ordinance, found that the proposed chapter meets all four criteria laid out in the zoning ordinance, and that it is in the best interest of the city and to protect the safety and welfare of West Jordan resident, as well as protecting the beautification of the city and protecting the urban, the existing urban forests in West Jordan City. The planning staff is recommending that planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council.
Great, thank you, Ms. Larson. Any questions to the staff or applicant, since they're one and the same? Commissioner Green.
This may be a moral question to Mr. Duncan as opposed to, or, yeah, as opposed to anybody else, but it says in the ordinance that it's illegal to violate the provisions of the code, and I'm, and I'm not that familiar with city code enforcement, so maybe you can give me a quick primer, but it talks about being illegal, and then it talks about city code enforcement, and it's assessed as a civil action in 78B61002. Is that, so we're, we're not talking about a criminal enforcement, we're talking about a civil enforcement, is that what we're living?
That's right.
And it's a civil fine, even though the code enforcement writes a ticket or whatever they do, we're a civil fine as opposed to a criminal infraction or misdemeanor.
Right, and there's a whole separate part of the ordinance that deals with all code enforcement, and this would just tie into that existing part of the...
I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was reading, so...
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
We'll open up this item to public comment if anyone would like to talk trees. We'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Sokoski.
I'm Commissioner Sokoski, and I speak for the trees.
Love you, man.
I'd like to forward a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the new Chapter 18 for urban forestry and the zoning regulation Title 13 of the West Jordan Municipal Code.
Thank you. We have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Sokoski and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to the motion? If so, I must rhyme. Commissioner Green.
I have no challenge. If you don't mind, I'd make, I'd like to make a friendly amendment based on what the applicant said, and that is strike paragraph D2 from the amendment and renumber the paragraphs there.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Sokoski, is that amenable?
Yes.
Great, so we, and for the second, Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So we have the amended motion. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you for sticking around.
And it's also my birthday, so thank you.
Happy birthday, Tyne.
They already outlawed my sitting this evening, so, thank you, sir.
Item number eight on our agenda, Mountain West Towing, 5580 Leo Park Road, amended conditional use permit in towing impound blocks, salvage yard in the wellhead protection overlay in an M1 zone. Mountain West Towing, Lisa Butcher is the applicant. Are you present this evening? Great, thank you for your patience, please.
No problem, thank you. Yeah, my name is Lisa Butcher, I'm the owner of Mountain West Towing. We have been in the towing industry for the past 10 years, four-plus years of that being in operation here at the 5580 West Leo Park Road. However, just a few months ago, we were informed that we had some previous misinformation and that we needed to apply for a new conditional use permit. There is one that is existing, however, it only is good for 10 cars, and we would like to tow much more than 10 cars. We have an acre and a half parcel, and we, we were also told that the building wasn't large enough, so we've proposed that we're going to put one on the west side, about 7,500 square feet, and put all the towing behind that. And we'd also like to do possible sales of, you know, some parts here and there, and just kind of get everything done at one time with the conditional use, and we'd like to get going back to work as soon as possible, because right now it's, you know, it's not the best of times for us. So, yeah, that's basically all the information I, I would like to share with you right now.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Butcher? Commissioner Sokoski.
Thank you. How long have you been doing business in West Jordan, by my eyes?
I believe it's just over four years at this property.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll reserve some time for it if there's anything else you'd like to address after we deliberate.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks very much. And Mr. Gardner, do you have this for the city?
Yes, and so, the applicant's relocated this corner of Harley Park Road, Leo Park Road, for about four or five years now. It was granted a special exception permit in the early 90s to another business where those conditions of the smaller containment area for the cars was established. So, in all fairness to the applicant, she pursued it based upon that condition of approval. She didn't, she's never been trying to do anything illegal, or she just simply wasn't aware of what requirements there were. And in fairness to code enforcement, they're just doing their job and make sure that the city's business areas and industrial areas are protected, and so she was notified, she's coming in and is willing to improve the site, pave the whole acre and a half, put the landscaping in, that, but that would be handed to the, handled at the staff level approval because that's, you know, site plan approval is our staff level in the M1 zone. Compounding issues here is also that her site is within Zone 2 of a well, a drinking water source, you can see Zone 1, other fire station is actually where the wellhead is located, so that essentially would require, above and beyond the ordinance requirement that the site be paved anyway to contain oil, antifreeze, fuels, that type of thing, so they don't go into the groundwater system. The previous property owner has already constructed a nice fence, it surrounds the street side of the entire site, and then on the left-hand side is a drawing of how Ms. Butcher wants to operate the business. There'll be several different business licenses within the one and a half acre, which is perfectly acceptable under this conditional use permit, but they're all under the same conditions. And, and so, staff feels that with the 17 conditions of approval, that any drinking water source or wellhead issues are adequately addressed, as well as the protection of the industrial, industrial area as far as the statics, how cars are moved in and out of the site, how they're stored and that. I want to add that the, you know, what she wants to do there, the impounding of vehicles, storage of vehicles, repair of vehicles, dismantling the vehicles and sales of those parts are all covered under this conditional use permit, and so hopefully this will take care of the issue for this business owner, and staff recommends approval of this subject to the conditions of approval. You have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gardner? Commissioner Green.
So, the applicant's agreed to all 17 conditions, I'm assuming, that's why there was the...
Yes.
We'll open this up to public comment if anyone would like to mention anything regarding this item. Seeing that, we'll close the public comment and have deliberation amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Green.
Based on the information of findings set forth in the staff report and on the evidence and explanations received today, I move the planning commission approve the conditional use permit to operate a junk and salvage yard and conditional use permit to operate a junk and salvage yard of drinking water source protection zone, overlay zone on the property located at 5580 West Leo Park Road, subject conditions 1 through 17 listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Sokoski.
Thank you, and thank you for doing business in West Jordan.
Yes.
Or second. Well, I speak for the trees.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Sokoski. Do we, do we have any discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thanks for doing things right. I, I think you have the record for the most conditions that we've seen on an application, so we appreciate your business. Thank you very much.
I'd like to correct that, the ATV placed on 1300 West at 18, so sorry, those...
A close second place. Item number nine on the agenda is Think Storage MVC, 5701 West, 7800 South, general plan land use amendment for 8.3 acres from community commercial to light industrial use, and rezone from SC2 to an M1 zone. Think Storage WJC LLC, Warren Kirk is the applicant. Are you here this evening, sir? Please come forward, thank you.
Members of the commission, I have grown old, and I have lost hair in commission meetings, but I have to tell you with a high compliment, tonight, it has been a joy to sit here, as long as I have sat here, to watch the dialogue and the arguments by both you as a commission and the residents that were here. Actually, kind of a beautiful art tonight, sometimes like a... Sometimes, like I said, I've lost hair. That having been said, I do have a horse in the fight, or a dog in the fight, or a horse in the race tonight, and the topic that I'm bringing up, well, the last thing, I've never been fed treats before in a meeting, so thank you. Little extra sugar boost. That all being said, I know we want to go home. Long story short, the site is here, in the green is the power corridor. We have two gas, high-pressure, thirty-six-inch high-pressure gas lines that run parallel to the transmission lines for the power. We are sandwiched between the Mountain View corridor, and we are sandwiched with commercial and roads. So, as I have been involved with Peterson Development, and as this is part of the Highlands, what we're attempting to do is go to the highest and best use, and that is to preserve a small area of commercial fronting, seventy-eight hundred south, and put the rest of this in a M one zone. Therefore, we're requesting a map and general use amendment. I think I've said that. Larry, clean up what I haven't said, and I'm here for any questions. But again, I wanted to pay a compliment for the thankless job that you guys do.
That's very kind, Mr. Kirk.
True, true.
We appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Kirk? All right, we might come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gardner?
I think Warren covered, you know, whether, what the problems are with this site, that it's really not a prime commercial site, that it's on the land use map, as you can see, and the zoning map. But they really want to make use of the property. And the one advantage here is that Peterson owns all of the property around themselves, so they're really affecting themselves at this point. And I'm not going to lie to you and say that I M one zoning and storage units is not as valuable real estate as commercial. And so the Petersons are doing this because they want to use the property for something. It's really got some big issues sandwiched between those, really all of those major utilities. The one advantage is that they're willing to keep storefronts on seventy-eight hundred south, and they're not going any farther north, or excuse me, east than the power corridor. And so the whole hard corner on fifty-sixth and seventy-eighth will be preserved for commercial. This really, the only visibility to any of the storage units will be from the Mountain View corridor as people whiz by on that road and then they get off. But as you can see, we certainly have had much larger storage unit projects in the city, but it does make a good use of a very hard-to-develop property. And Think Storage, if you visited their, or taken a look at their product that they build, it's right south of Costco in South Jordan. And so they really do take pride in what they put up. They're just not putting up corrugated, quantsified storage units. They really want to make it a nice project. And so, this is in the Highlands, and so we don't allow industrial uses in the Highlands, but we'll address if this zone change and land use map amendment goes through. That'll be addressed at the time of the subdivision. And so it will come back to you at that time as a recommendation to take it out of the Highlands master development plan, but that won't proceed until we make sure that the council's in agreement with the land use changes. With that being said, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval to the city council for both of the applications. You have any questions for me?
Well, thank you, Mr. Gardner. So what would the fencing be like? The reason that I wonder is with there being an RV component to it, has there been any discussion on that? I don't see it in the staff packet, because I know some RV units, the fencing's low, and you just see a mess of RVs. And to go on with that, what would the requirement be for them to park the RVs there? Does that need to be pavement?
Oh, yes, the whole site will be paved. There's no gravel site here. It'll all be paved. Fencing is something we'll address at the site plan issue.
Okay.
It could be attractive, fencing doesn't necessarily... We don't allow chain link with razor ribbon, so it'd have to be probably the anodized aluminum type stuff, so it would be something. And I think that sort of thing does that in South Jordan. And so I don't know for sure if they have RV storage yet, but I've seen that used around the airport and that type of thing.
So potentially, you can still see overheads into the RVs.
Absolutely. But necessarily, being able to see into a site is actually a policeman's west friend, you know, because people can hide. It's bad enough that we hide behind vehicles, but to be completely walled off, I don't think is an advantage.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
So my question was going to be, they're going to come back with the site plan and the building design and those kind of things on this project?
Subdivision, now, I can, it does give staff the discretion that the site plan can come back to the planning commission, and so I can certainly take that as a note and then discuss that with Scott later date, and we can bring it back if you want to see it.
The only reason I ask is, you know, we are putting that along Mountain View corridor, and I just want to make sure that even for Mountain View corridor, it doesn't look too terrible.
Yeah, I'll just take that as a note that you want to see the site plan along with it, because you're going to see the subdivision and development plan update anyway.
And then, the last question that I have is that, on the application, did we get the UDOT property signature? It wasn't part of the package, that's why I asked.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. Just a comment, I have seen their facility in South Jordan, behind Costco, it is very nice. If it is fenced, you still can see the whole thing from Bangor, and it is pretty well-done.
Thank you. Mr. Leifer?
So, the next item on the agenda, or we had a couple. Anyway, the last item on the agenda is talking about this particular type of land use, and if the council adopts it, even similar to what is proposed in your packet, this would also require a conditional use permit in conjunction with their site plan. And so, site issues like screening and those types of things would come back before the commission. Just wanted to put that over here.
Thank you. Have we opened this up to the public? I thought so, didn't think so, just wanted to make sure. All right, public comment time, if anyone would like to say anything on this item. We open that up now.
I know you've heard enough of Peterson Development, but I have less hair than Warren. But if I could just make one point, I am the point person that deals with all the commercial activity for the Highlands and for Peterson on all four corners and in this area. And so, those referrals and the people and the groups come to me. And I can just assure you that there is no commercial activity or interest in this piece of property because of its proximity to the substation there and all that's going on there. The irregular piece of property that it is in triangular shape makes it very difficult. You're very deep from seventy-eight hundred south, and so we have, as Warren said, we've carved out a component for commercial fronting seventy-eight hundred south that we believe is viable. But to do anything deeper than that just isn't viable. We believe, really, that this is a great and viable piece for storage. But commercial for retail, for office, is just simply not viable back there. Everyone have, all the groups that we've talked to, and there've been numbers, a number of groups and people, they have no interest in that piece of property for commercial development. I'm just shooting very straight with you, because I deal with all the commercial there for Peterson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strang. Commissioner Sikoski?
I was just going to wait till it came back to the commission.
That's true. We're going to close the party with a few seconds, or something. Sorry about that. Let's close the public comment section, seeing no further comments, and we'll bring it back to the commission, and Commissioner Sikoski?
Awesome, thank you. First, I'd like to say, I think this is a really elegant design for this particular little pod. We've had a lot of commercial storage units brought to us lately, and this is where commercial storage belongs. I feel like this is a great area for this. There's definitely a need and demand out there. There's a lot of high-density housing, or medium-density, a lot of small lots, a lot of people around my area, I live out there, want RVs or toys, and they just don't want to be where to store them. So, this is a fantastic place to put it. I like that the buildings buffer Mountain View corridor from the RV storage. Yeah, it's great. So, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that based on the information of findings in the staff report, and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission rezone eight point three acres from an SC two community shopping center zone to M one light manufacturing zone on the property located at fifty-seven oh one west, seventy-eight hundred south.
Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion in that motion? Commissioner Green?
I'll just say that if it weren't for the high power, the high power of lines and the gas there, I'd go against this. Right. Because it was originally master planned as an SC zone, and this commission's been pretty consistent about not putting storage units in a good commercial zone. And, you know, whether it worked, because there's a whole lot of intersections along I fifteen that have that same kind of piece of property that have gotten not viable commercial when you look at Ninetieth and northbound, and one-twenty-third, and a bunch of those. So, the only reason I'm voting for it tonight is because of the gas lines and the power line.
Thank you. Any other discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan.
Can we get both land use map and zoning map?
True, we have a second motion that's required. Thank you very much, Mr. Gardner. Commissioner Sikoski?
So let's see, I did the land use. All right, based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that we approve to the city council amendment number three and eight of the ordinance zero-one dash three-four... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong...
Yeah, just read on the front page, which isn't...
That's the one I read, right? Oh, I flipped to the...
Julie, did he approve the zoning map for the...
I did the zoning.
That's what I thought, too.
Okay, sorry, I flipped to the wrong page.
So somebody can just do the...
I've got it, yeah. Let's see. Based on the information findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission amend the future land use map from community commercial to light industrial on the property located fifty-seven oh one west, seventy-eight hundred south.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski? And, sorry about that. We'll go, Commissioner Quinney, you had a comment. Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion in that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you. We're trying to get use of the new audio system. Thank you very much. We move forward then to Rush Tire and Service. Item number ten on our agenda, ninety thirty-five south, thirteen hundred west, amend ordinance number zero-one dash thirty-four, removing zoning condition number three that prohibits vehicle and equipment repair, limited. CG Zone Galvanize LLC, John Stevens is the applicant. Mr. Stevens, thank you for your patience this evening.
Thank you, Chairman of the Commission. I'm the owner of Rush Tire and Service. We're an up-and-coming business that started in Sandy about three years ago, and we have severely outgrown the space that we rented, which happens to be located at eighty-five eighty-four south and seven hundred east. And we're trying to find a suitable location to continue to build our brand and to turn out more vehicles. In our business, location is critical, as well as quantity. And right now, I am certainly okay on the location, being on Seventh East, which has a thirty-five thousand car count per day, but I am severely limited in being able to store cars and work on cars and employ more people in general. So, I do believe our business does fall within the vehicle and equipment repair limited definition as per the West Jordan City Ordinance. And ironically, this property was purchased back in July of last year. At the time, the owner was Platinum Car Wash, which I'm sure you've all even been to. I'm not a resident of West Jordan, but it was purchased by Mr. Car Wash, who acquired upwards of twelve or thirteen different properties within Utah, essentially trying to monopolize a certain segment of the population getting their car washed. Well, shortly after their acquisition of the property, it turns out that the mothership, the corporate office, had issued a set of standards that apparently this car wash didn't meet. So it was a corporate blunder on Mr. Car Wash's part. Now, this is all per the listing agent who represents the sellers. And so subsequently, what they did was, they got bids to see if they could somehow retrofit the building to meet those standards, but apparently that bid was too expensive and it didn't work out. So they decided to quickly put the property back on the market. At the time it went back on the market, it was high-priced, near one and a half million, far outside of my budget to grow my business, but over the course of the last four or five months, they've dropped the price three different times. And at that point, I couldn't overlook it, because I do think that the size of lot at one point two four acres, the buildings that are on the actual premises would certainly suit my business needs. But more importantly, I think the one caveat that any sort of similar business who's looking to put a car wash there would be, was that the owners are very strict and stern in telling any incoming buyers that they were going to have that buyer sign a deed restriction, which would disallow the use of a tunnel car wash there, which is what that site was built for. And that they only wanted to have like the four open bays for the, you know, just the hand wash that, you know, most people would do on a Saturday morning. So, well, turns out that after looking at these zoning conditions, the last condition is facilities that are exclusively self-serve car wash bays. I do believe that that means that that's also a restriction on the zoning as well. So, and I want to just use Commissioner Sikoski's, I'm going to quote him here in saying that "A city is a dynamic and ever-changing entity." So I do believe that these initial conditions were put in place, and they are written in as an assurance to the adjoining businesses that a quick sale to say a subsequent owner wouldn't disturb their businesses or their business practices in the future. We do need to move forward with this, and if you can identify the various uses here, it's really catered to all the surrounding businesses. And my proposition is to put a well-run, well-maintained business in that place, because it'll sit obsolete for many years to come unless someone comes in, buys it, tears it down, and decides to try to put up another structure to utilize another use for the property. So I do believe, too, that the impact on the neighborhood would be very minimal, and that's why I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gardner here, because he has more details on those details.
Any questions for the applicant before we hear from Mr. Gardner? Great, thank you. Mr. Gardner?
So Platinum Car Wash sits just off the corner of Vegas South and thirteen hundred west. It's behind the, used to be Conoco, I think it's Exxon, or it's a gas station, service station, about convenience, so they call it. Just west of the McDonald's, and then there's offices around, and of course, across the street is EMC West, who is vacating the site soon. So, but there'll be another potential business... site soon. So, but there'll be another potential business moving in there. So what I'm saying is that it really is, it really is in that commercial mode that we talk about a lot as far as locating commercial businesses in a node. This is on that corner, it's in that node. And so what the applicant is asking to do is, he's not changing the zoning of the property. What he is, is getting rid of the condition that was opposed by a council, you know, 16, 17 years ago. And I think he's spot on. It was just made at that time to protect the interest of that particular, that particular car wash, you know. And there's nothing wrong with that. However, we don't do zoning conditions here anymore. That's gone away several years ago. But we still respect and abide by the decisions of councils that are willing to put those things in ordinance form. And so what he's asking for is to allow the vehicle repair limited, which is what he does. He sells tires, he does all kinds of repairs on business vehicles, you know, that includes a whole variety, you know, of repairing, AC, you know, diesel repairs, tune-ups, figuring out why your car doesn't run well, that type of thing. The one thing he doesn't do is he doesn't rebuild engines or transmissions on the site. Now, if they need servicing, I'm not gonna lie to you, will pull one out and store the vehicle inside and that, that engine or transmission will be taken to somebody who specializes in that. There's very few mechanics, what I call the old Perry Mason mechanic that does everything. They just don't do that. Things are too specialized anymore. You know, they just, they, but he runs a very clean business. I've visited his site in Sandy. I was impressed. He keeps the front of it clean, it looks nice, and I don't foresee any issues with this applicant on this site. As a staff, I don't believe that, hey, I'm sorry, I have to fix this. I don't believe that this type of business is any more impactful than a car wash was for the last 15 years. I think it would be a good fit for this corner in this city and I recommend approval. I recommend that the planning commission forward this onto the city council with a positive recommendation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gardner. So this wouldn't be for just this application only and be city-wide?
No, it would be just this application because it's very specific for this site. It's an ordinance written for this site.
Okay, that's what I was hoping, because it said limited, so.
Yeah, what we're gonna do is, well, and the funny thing is, is right to the, you know, if they want to go across the street or any other CG zone, they could put it limited. But this site has an extra restriction on it imposed by a council several years ago. And so what you're doing is removing that condition from that.
Just on this?
Just on this.
Great, thank you. And then, Mr. Murray, just a question. I don't know how pertinent this is, but on the agenda, it doesn't say anything about lifting zoning condition number eight? But just meaning on the agenda that was sent out to the public, it just talks about number three, not number eight. Is that an issue?
No, because it's gonna go to the council.
Yeah, that's not a concern in my mind. It's, I think there's enough specificity as to what the change is going to be that mentions. I'm more concerned in the language, is the language clear? And it's clear that they're removing prohibitions against vehicle and equipment repair. So somebody that reads that clear language, you know, is gonna understand what it is. The other thing that I think is relevant is anytime you're removing restrictions or conditions, you just want to make sure that that's not gonna cause an undue impact on surrounding uses. But the criteria two, three, and four, the findings that the staff has made it clear that there is, there is gonna be compatibility between this property and the surrounding commercial and residential. There's not gonna be an impact on health and safety. There's not gonna be an impact on the public services. And those are the things you wanna double-check on just to make sure that you're, you know, if there was residential right next to it, having cost impact, that would be a concern. But where you've got the findings, that those are not concerned, I think, in terms of businesses.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murray. Commissioner Green?
I was just, just out of curiosity, why don't we eliminate all the conditions on this piece of property and make it match everybody else on the corner, on the other three corners?
That's not what you're applied for.
Okay.
I don't know, then I have to write more, no.
Yeah, I don't have any particular interest in bail bond companies.
I was just asking, you know, if there's something that makes it just easier to eliminate the whole condition on the whole piece of property so the city doesn't have to track it in the future.
Correct. Welcome to West Jordan.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yes, I just have one question. It says here in the background, the ordinance amendment will be for this specific parcel property and will not affect other properties under ordinance 01-34. The ordinance says amended zoning conditions will be, and number one is banquet manag institution, blow by mannequin.
Yeah, I don't know.
We're only doing three, eight, or number three and number eight.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Alright, thanks very much. Well, this is agendized as a public meeting, so we'll open that up for anyone who would like to speak. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Sikowski?
Thank you. Thank you for wanting to do business in West Jordan. I think this will be really a great fit for this property. So, all that said, based on the information applying set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission recommend approval to the city council amending number three and number eight of ordinance 01-34, removing three, vehicle and equipment repair limited, and number eight, any uses related to lubrication of vehicles from the zoning conditions.
Commissioner Quinn?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Sikowski and a second from Commissioner Quinn. Does anybody have any discussion to the motion?
Yeah, I do.
Commissioner Green?
I just want to point out that there's, so when they redo, when we redo the ordinance, because in the background it said ordinance 0134 will read, number seven says facilities that are exclusively self-service car wash bays. Now, let's just make sure we fix that for wash so that we do the ordinance right.
Thank you for clearing that up. Any other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Have a great night.
Thank you.
And best wishes in West Jordan.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number 11 on the agenda, text amendment for the 2009 city code, section 13-5F, manufacturing zones, providing additional regulations regarding warehouse, self-service storage in the M1 light manufacturing zone with citywide applicability. And the city of West Jordan is the applicant with Mr. Lenford addressing that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What's that? Through attrition, yeah. So, storage units are only allowed in the M1 zone currently. To help stimulate economic development, site plan development in the M1 zone is staff approval. So, a couple months ago, or about a month ago, we took an item to the city council just to bring it to their attention that we, over the last couple years, have seen a huge uptick in applications for storage units. And consequently, we've been losing a lot of valuable industrial land. And so we took this, you know, this information to the city council, and I've got all the stats in your staff report, I'm not gonna go over those. Discussing that with the city council, they directed staff to draft an ordinance that would not completely eliminate, but restrict appropriately this type of land use in the city. And so we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We looked at our existing ordinances and different uses that we have placed prescriptions on over the years, like bail bonds and cashing places and so forth. So we kind of took that structure and that format and we developed a very simple, in my opinion, a very simple approach to this particular use. The proposal is to restrict storage units, again, to the M1, keep it in the M1 zone, require storage units to obtain a conditional use permit, and then place a spacing requirement based on the, basically there's three different options that we're presenting to you, spacing of a quarter mile, half mile on the line. And you can see that map, how that plays out in the real world, property line, property line. And essentially, by picking one of these spacing requirements, will greatly restrict the amount of land lost to this very low revenue-generating land use. Yeah, we talked about, we've heard a couple times tonight, the highest and best use. I mean, that's something that we try to look at when we're developing property. Land is a finite resource and once it's gone, it's gone. And so we be really careful in how we develop out our city. And so we want to maximize the return. And as you saw tonight, there is a time and place for storage units. And that item earlier on in the agenda, I think is an appropriate place in the use for the storage units. So you can see actually by looking at this map, that the thing stores that you reviewed would be outside any one of these buffers and therefore would be eligible to move forward. So with that, we're recommending the approval of this ordinance. The ordinance as drafted right now recommends a half-mile buffer. But certainly, if you have different opinions, you can state that and forward that on to the city council and look forward to answering any questions to that.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Paragraph L, very last one. It says, "Expansion of existing warehouse self-service storage facility that doesn't comply with the required spacing may occur if the expansion occurs on the same lot as the existing facility." Now, I'm one of those cynical guys that believes that anybody will try anything. So here's, my question is, when it says same lot as the existing facility, does that, let's say there's a piece of property vacant for the next one and they buy it and incorporate it into one lot, would they be allowed to do that there to skirt the, you know what I'm saying? Or are we gonna limit it to the lot that was approved, the lot that was approved at the time the conditional use permit was issued?
Great point. If we'd like to lock it down, I would not oppose changing that language to.
I can't read, sorry.
So, yeah.
That was my, that's my question. I'd like to see somebody coming in and say, hey, I've got a facility. And for example, the one that's right next to me, right, I live with, I live in 62 feet, less than that, of two of them. And the Sprinkler Supply owns the vacant lot to the east. And I could see somebody buying that and saying, hey, I'm gonna make it one lot and put another storage, you know, expand the storage unit. Well, they tried. Trust me, they tried. But you know what I'm saying?
I do, and I understand your point. And that's why I think your observation is.
Okay, I'm gonna think about some wording here.
Commissioner Luther?
How does this impact the ones that are applicable under review?
They're able to move forward, they're kind of grandfathered into the current status.
So it looks like none of that would be approved if this weren't true?
Correct. And we, since we started working on this, we've had many, many requests come in. But because of state law regarding pending code changes, we're able to turn them away. You know, it's kind of a rush on the bank, you know. These are publicly noticed meetings and words got down. Back the night that we presented to the city council, we had, I forget the name, NICE Storage, I believe, came in. And technically, the council could have said, no, sorry, we're not. But they exercised their discretion, said, okay, we're taking this one last applicant, application. And so they're able to move forward. So yeah, the 26th C are able to move forward. Or, that's total, but.
But a lot of them are under review, yeah.
The six, the six in the queue right now are able to continue forward. We're not accepting any new applications though.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Our great city.
I'm gonna say something tonight. Thank you for doing this. I love this. This is my favorite part of the agenda right here. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Great. Well, this was agendized as a public meeting, so we'll open it up to public comment. And now we'll close it to public comment. Back to the commission for deliberation. Commissioner Green?
I'm gonna move, based on the analysis of findings set forth in the staff report and on the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission for a positive recommendation to the city council to amend 13-5 of the West Jordan Municipal Code to include the standards for warehouse self-service storage in the M1 light manufacturer zone with a modification in paragraph L that, or I, thank you, I that reads, last sentence, may occur if the expansion, if the expansion occurs on the same lot as approved under the conditional use permit. So just, what we're saying is that it's the lot that we approved on the conditional use and they can't expand it beyond that lot. That's the motion.
Great, we have a motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Sikowski.
Okay. That's on the record.
Got it, thank you. Any discussion to the motion? Is that clear enough, Mr. Lenford?
I really like that. The only, again, we're looking to punch holes in this, right? So the only, the only thing, the existing storage units in place today probably didn't get a conditional use permit. They're allowed by right now in the M1 zone. So to specifically mention as approved with the conditional use permit, maybe it was approved by the original site instead of use.
Yeah, maybe we could just say on the, on the same lot as was plotted for the original project, or as was plotted for the original conditional use permit.
I would say we stick with the language that was mentioned earlier, approved under the conditional use permit, and then just add or under, or other similar approval process. And then whatever the approval process is, whatever the land was.
That works.
That's what we're talking about. So I'd just add the words or, or equivalent, or similar approval process.
Great, Commissioner Sikowski?
I think what he said. But let's use or equivalent.
Great. So just to make sure that we have the exact vernacular, Commissioner Green, would you like to state the exact terminology?
The last word, the last line of that paragraph, would say may occur, if the expansion occurs.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Green, Commissioner Sikowski, could you please turn off your mic?
Sorry. May occur if the expansion occurs on the same lot that is, that was approved under the conditional use permit or equivalent process.
Mr. Murray and Mr. Lenford? We have a second. We have a second on that friendly amendment?
Approval process, I feel more comfortable as a zoning administrator to go that.
Reseconded. So, where does approval process go in that? Just make sure that Julie can have it?
She's got third.
You've got it?
Yeah.
Great. Wonderful. Just want to make sure when people are reading this today, they've got it. Wonderful, okay. Any further discussion to that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero, which brings us down to thanking Julie for water. And please bold and underline Mr. Kirk's comments about the planning commission working all the way. And thank you, Mr. Lenford, for the new packet format. Where's that Julie? Who's responsible? I mean, I know it came from the council because we talked about it, but...
Yeah, if you'd like to streamline things and as we move to the electronic form, if you ever have comments to improve it, it's a work in progress. So, please feel free to send any recommendations, suggestions to us and we're looking to constantly improve, so thank you.
I think something, did we have both of those motions that were needed on that one? You know, when we did, oh, both of them were there. Okay, that's the point. So, they're both on the first?
Thursday. They have to come on the fourth, so yeah, a couple more days.
Great. Commissioner Quinney.
Approve adjourned.
Is there a second? Great. Any objection? We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Great.